Okay, welcome to the regular board meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for June 4th. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Excuse me, President Horsley. Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
Thank you. Next is time for public comment, and the first speaker on public comment is Martin Fox. Marty, you also have something that is on the consent item, and by the way, public comment is for items that are not under regular agenda, and so I'm going to give you, let you speak to both items at the same time, because I don't believe your item on consent has been pulled as of yet, so go ahead.
Thank you very much, President Horsley, member, honorable members of the board. Your service to the county is appreciated. I recognize that you could be doing other things in other places that would be a lot more pleasant. Please give some hope to family members of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment by voting to implement Laura's Law. Laura's Law is a positive outcome-producing procedure that creates a treatment-compliance behavioral situation which is certified to be effective, efficient, and economical by the United States Department of Justice. Policies and procedures that limit mental health treatment to only those persons living with mental illness who lack the capacity to understand their need to volunteer for treatment endangers the mentally ill, like the 24-year-old Afghanistan war veteran who was suffering from PTSD when his 22-year-old cousin yanked the gas can he was holding away from him and threw a set of knives up on the roof before the cousin was struck by a shovel in Woodside last December 12th. The veteran escaped, or tried to escape, when he was being transferred from the hospital to the jail. That's treatment resistance. Even the VA in Menlo Park has PTSD treatment programs and lock facilities, yet he was committed to the Napa State Hospital instead of the VA in Menlo Park. Laura's Law is an evidence-based practice that stands in stark contrast to the ineffective, expensive, and inhumane policies and procedures that perpetuate the cycle of injuries and deaths like the ones that occurred in San Jose last month and in Santa Cruz and Sebastopol in February. We have them in our county, too. Please give some hope to the family members of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily. Vote to implement Laura's Law and demonstrate a commitment to obtaining positive outcomes.
Mr. Fox, I'm going to give you another minute to speak about that item on consent, item 16.
Mr. Byers approached me earlier before the meeting, and he agreed to remove the reference to the Soldiers and Sailors Civil Relief Act, which was repealed 10 years ago from the Private Defender Program contract. Take a look on page 17. The reason I brought the veteran up here is I think we need to start getting sensitive to veterans' issues so we can reduce recidivism. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that issue addressed?
Well, perhaps slightly modified.
Suspect.
What I agreed to do, it just came to my attention from Mr. Fox a few minutes before this meeting, that there's a legal citation in the Private Defender contract that may be problematic. What I committed to do was go and take a look at it, and so with your authority, I will do so. I'll have someone in my office take a look at that citation. If it needs to be either removed or modified, we'll do so, and then we'll do so before the board president signs the contract. But rather than wait two weeks and come back with a, you know, under consent then and wait two weeks for the board's approval for the contract, with your authority, we can go ahead and look at that citation. If it needs to, again, needs to be either removed or modified, we can do that before the board president signs the contract. So my suggestion is to keep it on consent, and then give me authority to modify that citation if appropriate.
We'll give you that authority.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is one other public speaker, Sarah Lambert.
Board President Horsley and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunities to speak with you this morning. My name is Sarah Lambert, and I'm Executive Director for Leslie Senior Communities. I wanted to publicly acknowledge the remarkable contribution that Dwayne Bay has made as Director of the County Office of Housing, particularly as it relates to the growth of affordable housing. Dwayne, along with his staff, has been able to solidly demonstrate the county's commitment to the development of affordable housing and services. He has made the department what it is today, an incredibly well-respected, vital, and indispensable partner with all the organizations that are committed to increasing the availability of affordable housing in the county. On a micro level, I would like to thank Dwayne and acknowledge him for responding enthusiastically to the very early concept of developing a senior campus in Half Moon Bay. By inviting the leaders of five nonprofit organizations to the table, along with Bill Lowell in his capacity as Director of San Mateo Housing Authority, Dwayne and his staff were able to guide the process and transform the concept into a reality. The Half Moon Bay Senior Campus will integrate approximately 250 units of affordable housing with a network of pedestrian pathways, seating areas, and open space. A senior center and an Adult Day Healthcare Center will also be located on the campus. Due to Dwayne's efforts, the County of San Mateo received national recognition for this project with the award of the Building Healthy Communities Active Agent and Commitment Award sponsored by the EPA. Although I believe that the county is losing a dedicated, talented, public servant, I'm pleased that William Lowell has been selected to continue Dwayne's legacy, and I look forward to working with him in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert, for your comments. It's now time to set the agenda and approve or not approve the consent agenda items. Is there any items to remove from consent?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Set the agenda.
Is there a second to approve the agenda and setting the agenda and approving the consent agenda, so there's a motion and second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, it's done. Next item, a presentation and awards, and the first is a presentation of a resolution honoring Patricia Brown upon her retirement as Executive Director of Redwood City 2020. Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
As many of you know, Pat Brown has enjoyed a long and distinguished career of service to Redwood City. She was a trustee on the Redwood City School District Board for 14 years and served as the Executive Director of the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center for some 18 years. Now, for the past five years, Pat has been leading the collaborative work of Redwood City 2020, and their mission is to strengthen children, youth, and families, certainly a noble and inspiring goal. And they achieve that mission through the partnerships that they've developed with Redwood City, the Redwood City School District, Sequoia Union High School District, the County of San Mateo, Stanford University, Sequoia Healthcare Foundation, and a host of nonprofits and private businesses. Under Pat's leadership, anything is open to discussion. Just consider some of the issues that Redwood City 2020 is or has tackled: wellness, drug and alcohol abuse, gangs, obesity, asthma, hunger, readiness for kindergarten, access to soccer fields, and many more. Pat Brown has devoted her life to the positive development of children, and through her years of service, she has come to represent a force for sustainable change. Under her most recent leadership at Redwood City 2020, the organization, I believe, has flourished, and the lives of children and families have been made much better. On the occasion of Pat's retirement from Redwood City 2020, it is my pleasure to recognize, honor, and thank Pat Brown for all that she has done for this community and all that she will do in the future. So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for Pat Brown's recognition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Pat, are you available to come to the front of the room?[622.16][622.16](laughter)[623.16][623.16](applause)
I just want to express my appreciation to you and to all of the members of the board for this recognition. It's been my honor to work in this community and with the many dedicated leaders in this community for a long time, and it's just time now for a change, and I hope I will still be able to contribute in the future, but I'm looking forward to just a little bit quieter pace for a while. So, thank you so much for this honor.
And I've worked with Pat Brown over a number of years in a number of different roles, so congratulations on all that you've accomplished and have a great retirement. I'm sure you'll be involved in other kinds of activities in our community as well. Next item is a presentation of a proclamation designating June 2013 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, and intersex Pride Month Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you, President Horsley. Today, we commemorate all those who have addressed or in advance the cause of equality for the LGBT community and to honor all the contributions that they have made. The LGBT QQI Month is commemorated in June of each year, as it was in June of 1969 when the Stonewall riots occurred in New York, which began the modern gay rights movement. The LGBT rights movement has achieved great progress since that time, but much remains to be done. Of course, we need marriage equality in every state in this nation, and LGBT youth should feel safe to learn in school without fear from harassment or bullying. This year, San Mateo County will celebrate for the first time. On June 15th, we will have the LGBT Pride Celebration, and today we have with us some representatives from the County Pride Initiative who I believe would like to share a few words.
Thank you Supervisor Pine. My name is Susan Tacolo. President Horsley and board members, on behalf of the Pride Initiative, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and the LGBT QQI community of San Mateo County, I want to thank you for this proclamation and your support of our first-ever Pride Celebration in San Mateo County. Our Board of Supervisors has been supportive of our community for many years, providing equal benefits for domestic partners of county employees and passing a resolution against Proposition 8, just to name two. This proclamation is one more example of your commitment in San Mateo County. Thank you for the recognition of Pride Month, but there's a lot more to be done to fill the needs of the LGBT QQI community in San Mateo. We do not have an agency that focuses exclusively on this community, unlike San Francisco or Alameda Counties, nor do we have an open meeting place or a community center. I want to thank also BHRS, the Office of Diversity and Equity, and our wonderful event sponsors for supporting this effort, although there is more support that is needed to address the needs of our community. This proclamation formalizes the county's sponsorship of our historic Pride Celebration that will be happening on June 15th in Central Park in San Mateo. You're all invited to help us inaugurate what we hope to become an annual event for our community. Now, I want to thank everyone who's here this morning in support of this proclamation. We are San Mateo County residents who are part of the community, family, allies, and friends, who are all here to thank you for your support and to celebrate our community, and we hope to see you on June 15th.
Okay, don't go too far. Do we have any other speakers?
Well, we do have three speakers. Do you want to?
We're going to do the resolution, of course.
Do you want to do the resolution now or make a motion to approve the resolution?
Sure, I'll move the approval of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have three speakers, Carol Cook, Casey Shannon, and Reverend Terry Echabarker. If you would come up to the front, then. Carol Cook first. Okay, there we go.[955.31][955.31](laughing)
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carol Cook, and I am here to thank Supervisor Horsley and especially Supervisor Dave Pine and the whole Board of Supervisors for your support of our families. I'm speaking on behalf of San Jose Peninsula PFLAG, Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, and the support that our families have received from San Mateo County means a great deal to us, and particularly this particular resolution honoring Gay Pride Month. We really appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.[1001.04][1001.04](applause) Shannon Casey?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Shannon Casey. I'm with an organization called Our Family Coalition, which serves the equity and diversity of all families, including LGBT. I'm very honored to be here today and to thank you very much for your work, one in the civic realm, because I understand how much dedication that takes, and I'm very grateful for that, and also, as we, as I work in the elementary schools with the children, I call it being upstanding. You are being upstanding today, and I'm very grateful that you are stepping into your power and creating space for gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgendered people. We need marriage equality, we need immigration, we need lots of things. The biggest thing that your step does today is create visibility, and it increases awareness. This helps create a safer school climate for the children that we're working with. We have some parents who have, their lives have been threatened, they have, people have tried to run them over because of an awareness that they were a gay or lesbian family. Children every day are told that they can't have two moms or two dads, so I'm very grateful for your work in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.[1082.83][1082.83](applause) Reverend?
It's Eccle Barker.
I was close.
It's a mouthful, I know that.
I do butcher names periodically.
I'm the pastor of the Peninsula Metropolitan Community Church in San Mateo, California. Metropolitan Community Churches were founded in 1968 and have been working for equality for LGBT people and their families since that time. You know, every year when Pride Month comes along, we all go tooling off to other counties to celebrate pride, not able to do it here at home, and so I'm really thrilled that this year we'll get to celebrate at home. And while the county's support of LGBT people has been sort of an open secret within the county itself and within the, you know, halls of government, now it's an open secret with this proclamation and no longer a secret, and so I'm thankful for that as well. You know, there have been conflicting religious views on the forefront of every civil rights movement throughout time, you name it. There have been people of faith on both sides of it. You will probably get calls from people after this gets publicized telling you that you've made a bad decision, but I want to also note that in the end, it's the civil authorities who have taken the ball and moved it forward when it comes to civil rights, and it's civil of authorities who have created liberty and justice for all and made that true for us. And so I thank you today that you have taken another step, Dave, for reaching out, Mr. Pine, and Don Horsley, and the rest of you as well. Thanks again for your work and for your recognition today.
And thank you.[1183.58][1183.58](applause) Thank you Reverend Eccle Barker. I got it that time.[1190.25][1190.25](laughter) Okay, do you want to present that proclamation?
Yes, if you'd like to come up, we'll have the proclamation for you.
Thank you Supervisor Pine for bringing that to the board. Next item is, item number three is rescission of a resolution honoring William Ayers. Again, Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you. On January 15, 2002, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution honoring William Ayers for his lifetime of achievements in the field of psychiatry in his first efforts to improve the lives of children and adolescents. At that time, Mr. Ayers was held in high regard in San Mateo County and in professional circles throughout the nation. In fact, he served for many years as President of the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. But when granting the honorary resolution in 2002, the board did not know that hiding behind this facade of professionalism and accomplishment was a child predator. Mr. Ayers was arrested in April 2007 and charged with molesting six boys in his private soundproof office from 1988 to 1996 under the guise of giving them medical exams. The district attorney's office now knows of upwards of 50 alleged victims of Mr. Ayers, and there are likely many more, some going back to the 1960s. But most of these cases fell outside the statute of limitations. The prosecution of Mr. Ayers stretched over six years and included three trials, but finally, on May 16th of this year, Mr. Ayers admitted to the child molestation charges filed against him, thereby ending a very arduous legal process that postponed justice for far too long. Today, I'm asking my colleagues to rescind Mr. Ayers' honorary resolution. Mr. Ayers has caused horrendous, horrendous harm to his victims and their families. It's hard to comprehend the suffering that they have endured. Child molestation robs children of their childhood, it creates a loss of trust, feelings of guilt, and often results in self-abusive behavior. As a father of two boys aged nine and 12, my heart is broken when I think of the evil that has transpired here. By rescinding Mr. Ayers' honorary resolution, we show our support for the victims and their families. Some of the victims and family members are here today in the audience. They have gone through so much pain, and I wish, I wish we could do, we could do more to help, but hopefully our action here today, when combined with Mr. Ayers' conviction, will bring some sense of closure and assist the families and the victims in the healing process. So I'd now like to go ahead and make the motion to rescind the resolution honoring William Ayers that was adopted in 2002.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, we also note that I've distributed each of you on your desk is a statement from a mother victim who did not want to speak publicly today, but she asked and I provided that statement to you.
Yeah, I do have that statement. I just saw it read some of the comments of it. What it basically says, "I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for providing the extra support to the prosecution of the William Ayers case that has resulted in a guilty verdict. I'd also like to thank the board for rescinding or for considering rescinding the award that was granted to William Ayers by this board." It goes on to say, "I would also like to mention that Victims Advocate Victoria Balfour has been instrumental in bringing the focus of this case to the local officials. Without her, this case would have never been brought forward. Her dedication to see that justice is done for these victims has been a ray of hope for the many victims of this criminal." So, Ms. Balfour has come from New York, Kepse, New York, so I was at the request of Supervisor Pine, he asked that she be given the three and a half minutes. I will give her four minutes. So, Vicky Balfour, would you be, you'll be the first speaker, and then it's Jonathan Huddleston after that, and Martin Fox in conclusion. Four minutes?
Sure, I don't think it's going to take that long.
Okay. And maybe the three and a half was correct?
Eighty-four.
Okay.
And thank you Supervisors for rescinding this award, and especially Dave Pine for doing so much for us. My name is Victoria Balfour. I'm a journalist and victims advocate. I'm not a resident of San Mateo County, but have been involved with the Dr. William Ayers case for the past 11 years. I think most people here don't realize this case all started out because of a chance encounter between two strangers in New York City. I wanted to tell you a bit about how this case came to be. By 2002, the year the San Mateo Board of Supervisors passed a resolution to honor Ayers for his tireless efforts to improve the lives of children, there had actually been a number of complaints from victims of Ayers over the course of several decades. Victims had gone to the police, they complained to Ayers' medical partners, they'd written letters to the California Medical Board, and several had complained to San Mateo Children's Services. But these complaints were either dismissed, ignored, swept under the rug, or in the case of a victim who went to the police in 1987, deemed unfounded. And just very recently, I learned that in 1993, an attorney for a boy who'd gotten into trouble with the law told a prosecutor in the San Mateo District Attorney's Office that Ayers had molested his client. The prosecutor responded, "Oh, no, I know Dr. Ayers, he would never do that." On May 28, 2002, just four months after the San Mateo Board of Supervisors passed the resolution to honor Ayers, I received a phone call at my home in New York City from a stranger who lived in Brooklyn. The stranger said he was a friend of a friend, and he was calling to ask about career advice and journalism. He told me he'd grown up in San Mateo, California. I asked him where it was on the map, I'd never heard of it. A few minutes into our conversation, the stranger got around to asking about the kinds of stories I'd had published in my career. I mentioned I'd written a story for Vogue magazine in which I revealed I'd been molested as a child. Then, to my shock, this man, whom I'd known for all of five minutes, blurted out that he'd been molested as a child, too. He confided that a child psychiatrist had molested him in therapy sessions when he was about 12 in the 1970s in San Mateo. I started firing questions at him. Had he ever told his parents, gone to the police? "No," he said. "I was too ashamed, I just tried to pretend it never happened." When I asked him if the doctor was still alive, the man said he didn't know. "Why don't you try to find out?" I said. "If he's still alive, you should go to the police." "No way," he said, sounding completely panicked. "What if I'm his only victim? I don't want to be the only one." Not long after our conversation, I ended up hiring this man to do some illustrations for me. Over the next two months, every so often, I would ask the man for more details about what the child psychiatrist had done to him. I will never forget the anguish and fear on his face as he choked out what had happened for as long as I live. It was excruciatingly tough to listen to his story. I felt protective of this victim, and with every fresh, new, disturbing detail of the abuse, I would feel a fury rising up in me that made me want to make things right for him. There was one thing I could not bring myself to ask him. I didn't have the nerve to ask for the doctor's name. I knew that once I got the name of the psychiatrist, then I would have to make the next step and investigate to see if he was still alive. But every time I tried to gear up in my head, think about looking for this doctor, I would get so overwhelmed and terrified, as if Ayers himself had been my predator, that I would have to shut down the impulse to look for him. Somehow, I intuited deep down that to help this victim get justice, it was going to take a gigantic commitment on my part, and I wasn't sure I was up to the task. Then, one evening, at a Barnes &amp; Noble on the Upper West Side of Manhattan in July 2002, where the man and I were having a business meeting at a table on the second floor, I saw that flash of raw anguish on his face that I'd seen all too often in the short time I'd known him. In that moment, all of a sudden...
Can you summarize it?
No, I'd like to finish, if that's okay.
Is it, do you have a lot of time, or is this?
It's just two more pages. It's four, that's gone very quickly. I think it's important.
Oh, okay, well, let's just...
Okay, it's, I think it's important that the audience know. And, I don't even know where I am. I saw that flash of raw anguish on his face that I'd seen all too often in the short time I'd known him. In that moment, all of a sudden... In that moment, all of a sudden, I got fed up with my fears about investigating this doctor. The question I'd been so afraid to ask just popped out. 'So what's the name of this child psychiatrist who molested you?' I said. 'Ayers,' the man said. 'Dr. William Ayers.' He wrote down the doctor's name on a scrap of paper and handed it to me. 'Okay,' I said. 'I'm gonna find out what happened to him.'" When I started out my hunt for Dr. Ayers, I just assumed he would be retired or maybe dead. Imagine my shock when I was at the New York Academy of Medicine Library when I discovered that Ayers was not only alive, but still practicing in the very same office where he had molested my friend. Imagine how stunned I was to learn on the Internet that just six months earlier, Ayers had been awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award for his tireless efforts to improve the lives of children. And imagine my sheer horror when I learned that Ayers was a former President of the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. I remember standing in the medical library and reading a copy of a speech Ayers had given while President of the Academy at an annual meeting in nineteen ninety-three, where he talked about a fifteen-year-old boy who had been his patient. "I wonder if Ayers molested that boy, too," I remember thinking. The possibility that Ayers had other victims was what did it for me. There was no question in my mind that my friend was going to have to report Ayers to the police. There was just one catch. The victim had told me he would only go to the police if other victims had already come forward. So I made the frightening decision to contact the San Mateo Police Department myself. I thought maybe I could find out if other complaints, other complaints about Ayers on file. I recall the day I called the police about Ayers very vividly. It was August seventh, two thousand and two. When I first picked up the phone to call, my heart was pounding so hard I almost couldn't breathe. I remember running to the kitchen to get a paper towel to wipe off the sweat from my dripping palms. I so badly wanted to be strong when I made the call for the victim, but instead I was a quivering mess. And then I started having flashbacks of my own childhood sexual abuse, and that made the call that much more frightening to make. I think I must have tried about eight times to call, but I kept slamming down the receiver before I could complete it. Somehow, I don't know how, I finally managed to complete the call and got through to the San Mateo Police Department." One more page. "The officer I spoke to took down my information, but didn't sound too hopeful about anything happening. So sure was I that I would never hear from the San Mateo Police Department again, that I started looking for a civil attorney for my friend. Then, on September nineteenth, two thousand and two, six weeks after I made the first call to the police, I received a call from a detective in the San Mateo Police Department. The detective said, 'I checked our records. I wanted to let you know that two other victims of Dr. Ayers have come forward over the years. We want to talk to your friend. Can you arrange it?' I bluffed and said, 'Sure, I can get my friend to talk to you,' but to be honest, I wasn't so sure that he would. He was having a very tough time in his life, and I wasn't sure if he would be up for opening up old wounds. Three days later, I took my friend up for dinner in Brooklyn. I waited until he finished his beer, and then I broke the news. 'Hey,' I said, 'remember how you said you would go to the police if there were other victims of Dr. Ayers? Well, I talked to the police, and they said two other victims have come forward. Now they want to speak to you.'" Not surprisingly, the man had a very intense reaction to my news. First, he turned white as a sheet, then he shot up out of his chair and started to bolt for the restaurant door. Fortunately, something made him change his mind, and he came back to sit at our table. "I can't believe it," he said. "All these years, I thought I was his only victim. You mean there are others?" "Yes, there are others," I said. "The detective believes there are hundreds more out there, just like you. Now will you go to the police?" "Yes," he said. "I will talk to the police about Dr. Ayers." And that's how the criminal investigation into Dr. Ayers began. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balfour. This is Jonathan Huddleston, and I will limit you to two minutes, sorry. And that's Martin Fox and John Buckhite.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for doing what you're doing here today, Dave. Thank you. My name is Jonathan Huddleston. I'm here to put a face to a victim. I'm speaking on behalf of the family of one of William Ayers' victims. I'm gonna call him J.D. in the interest of keeping anonymity for the family. I've known J.D. I knew J.D. since he was a small child, four years old. He went and saw Dr. Ayers when he was approximately eleven years old, around nineteen seventy-two. And when this whole case came about several years ago, I was emailing back and forth with a few friends, and I said, and we were talking about a public figure that I can't even remember who it was, somebody, Michael Jackson, or who the hell knows. But anyway, I made a comment of, "Don't even get me started about this Dr. Ayers thing." And J.D.'s brother emailed me back and said, "What about Ayers? I need to know." Long story short, turns out, J.D., his younger brother, was a victim of Ayers. He remembers being naked in his office a number of times. He was molested on a regular basis. Jim spiraled into drugs and alcohol in his high school years, and at the age of twenty-one, he was drinking a half a gallon of gin a day. He sobered up. At the age of twenty-two, he was sober for twenty-four years. When all of this Ayers stuff came up into the trial, I mean into the public knowledge and everything happened, it hit him hard, and he sank back into it. He started drinking again. On August seventh, two thousand and eleven, he took his life. I'll believe it when I see it if Ayers ever goes behind bars. I don't know why they put the sentencing date. I'm almost done. I don't know why they put the sentencing date so far out, August sixth. August sixth would have been J.D.'s fiftieth birthday. August seventh would be two years to the day that he committed suicide. This type of crime is the deepest, darkest side of humanity, and anybody who's ever experienced it or knows anything about it knows that there's just no turning back. What's done is done, and I don't know what else to say.
Thanks, Mr. Huddleston. Martin Fox.
Thank you, President Horsley. Thank you Supervisor Pine. Thank you Board of Supervisors for being willing to rectify an old, old wound. Psychiatry is at the heart of Lore's Law. Please consider rectifying another old wound. The policy that you have to get worse before you can get better. And vote to implement Lore's Law and repudiate the past.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. John Buckhite.
I'd like to say a few words about Ms. Balfour, who sought me out about three years ago because she was very passionately pursuing justice for Mr. Ayers, and she felt she was being stonewalled by the San Mateo District Attorney's Office. I had my own issues with the District Attorney's Office at that time. And I think it's safe to say that Ms. Balfour very persistently, very passionately, and in a good way, very unreasonably pursued justice for a long time, unreasonable in the sense of all progress in the world being made by unreasonable people. And many of the victims believe, I think quite correctly, that if it were not for her efforts, Mr. Ayers would not have pled or been found guilty to this crime. So I think she deserves a lot of gratitude for that. She has not been paid for any of the work she's done. In fact, she has paid herself. She's out here today at her own expense. The District Attorney's Office was pushed very hard by her. I think they bristled at it. And Mr. Pine asked what more could be done. I think that her effort should be recognized in some sense. I saw emails from as recent as about a week ago, in which the prosecutor from the District Attorney's Office, who was disciplined by the state bar for her behavior towards Ms. Balfour, said that she was nuts, she was a liar, she was actually on the payroll of Mr. Ayers. And these comments have been very hurtful, unfair, and I think defamatory to Ms. Balfour. And you should probably take action to make sure that the person who runs the District Attorney's Office doesn't run it in such a way that that type of behavior is permitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckhite. Now, we're gonna go onto matter set for specific times. It's the item...
We need a vote, actually.
Oh, we do? We need a vote. Oh, that's right. We make the motion?
This motion is seconded, yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Pine. Thanks for reminding me also about the vote. The nine a.m. item is a little late, but it's a consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a non-conforming use permit and off-street parking exception to allow the expansion of a non-conforming house on a non-conforming parcel to allow encroachments into the required setbacks and daylight planes, and to allow one covered parking space where two are required at Four Perry Avenue in unincorporated West Menlo area of San Mateo County. Mr... Ah, there is Mr. Egomire.
Good morning, President Horsley, Supervisors, Mr. Hall and Mr. Byers. My name is Jim Egomire, and I'm the Director for the Planning and Building Department. For your consideration, as President Horsley described, a non-conforming use permit, an off-street parking exception for a new second floor, and first-floor additions and remodel. The subject site is located in the West Menlo Park, unincorporated West Menlo Park, and adjacent, you can see Oak Knoll School to the north, and then also to the east, Stamford Golf Course, and a little bit farther south is the Alameda. Indicated in red outline here is the subject parcel, approximately three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet. And also faintly, we've indicated here the floor plans and overlaid that on this particular site to get an idea of the size of this particular proposal. And then an isometric here view of it, just to understand the context of the neighborhood. Now, I'm going to go through a number of slides out there near and adjacent to the particular subject site. This is the existing structure, nine hundred and ninety square feet, has one-car garage just behind those mailboxes there, and then the two-story structures on the adjacent property at Six Perry. Here's another view of the subject site, existing oak tree in the road right-of-way, existing facade there of that is one foot from the property line. Adjacent on the right-hand side of the subject property at Two Perry is a corner parcel, a two-story structure with two-car garage. Another view of that subject, of the site adjacent to Four Perry. And then on the left of Four Perry is Six Perry, a two-story structure there. And then looking down the street, you can see here the oak tree here in the road, and then the subject site just a little bit to the right of that. And then another view the other direction. And here's the existing site plan. It's labeled floor plan, but it just gives you an idea. Here in the dash lines are the required setbacks for this particular property. The existing condition has three encroachments, one in the front, one on the right side, as well as in the back by a few inches. A floor plan of that existing structure, two bedrooms, one-car garage, kitchen, and living room, and a small office. So two months ago, your board met regarding this appeal and continued the matter and established a subcommittee of two Board of Supervisors. And that subcommittee has met with the applicant, in which they proposed some modifications to the plan, in which the second-story encroachments were revised and lessened, and a fourth bedroom on the second floor was relocated into the rear yard, thus creating a ten-foot setback and encroachment into the rear area. And then the second story in the front was then redesigned to have an encroachment of about six feet on the right-hand side there, and then, well, the middle part where it's the second story, and then also about a three-foot encroachment on the left-hand side. I'll show you floor plans here in a minute, but the green area gives you an idea of the encroachments around here. So the revised floor plan included essentially a living room now where the bedrooms were, kitchen and dining room to the rear on the left, one-car garage, a little bit larger, and a new bedroom there in the back on the right-hand side. The second story, going up the stairs on the left, lower right, left side, you'd end up having a laundry room there to the right. To the left, you'd have the master bedroom, and then two additional bedrooms there, sharing one bathroom. These are the elevations. Also, we've taken and indicated the daylight plane requirements, so you have an idea of the encroachments relative to the daylight plane requirements for this particular project. And then included in your staff report was this particular comparison table, and I find it a helpful tool in understanding how this project's changed over time. Initially, we have the first column of the standards for this particular zoning district, followed by the existing conditions out there, the original proposal before the zoning hearing officer and the Planning Commission and your board the first time, and then alternatives provided by the appellant's, their group, and then staff's proposal, and then applicant made a revision and submitted alternative number three at the time of your deliberations two months ago. And then met with the subcommittee, and we have alternative number four. And I have some corrections that I'd like to share with you. Late last night, I was doing my own math and double-checking things here, and I want to clarify a few numbers with you. And I do have a handout, so you can follow along. So I'm gonna start first with lot coverage, because I want to clarify something relative to a letter submitted by the architect relative to the entry and entry porch, in which the zoning requirements, if it's greater than four feet, would be then, and has a waterproof roof, would then be counted as floor area. The particular entry area itself is forty-one square feet. And the applicant thus has, in that letter, clarified and said that they would reduce that entry porch to less than four feet. So then it would not be counted as part of floor area ratio. So then that really reduces the floor area here from two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight to two thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. Now, lot coverage is a different method of calculation, in which it's really just looking at a bird's-eye view of all the protrusions and all the remodels associated with a particular project. So in this particular case, what we have here is the main floor of twelve hundred and eighty square feet, a garage of two hundred and forty-seven. The porch counts as lot coverage. That's incorrect in the architect's letter, because anything over eighteen inches in height is counted as lot coverage. So by reducing the porch from forty-one square feet to a conforming situation would be about nine square feet reduced, from my estimations, that would then make that covered area thirty-two square feet out there, and that would count as lot coverage. And then on the second floor, in the rear, were two small protrusions on the second floor. That also counts as lot coverage. Add all the numbers together, and you get up one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine square feet divided by three thousand one hundred and twenty-five equals a lot coverage calculation of fifty-one point two percent. Now, let's shift to the last item there, the floor area ratio relative to the square footage of the parcel. Because the twenty-six, twenty-eight was reduced there to twenty-five, eighty-seven, I do the math, and I get eighty-two point eight percent there. So there's a reduction there, there's a reduction on this floor area, but there's an increase in lot, the lot coverage calculation. So I wanted to clarify that, so you understood that. So relative to the subcommittee's review and meetings that they've had with the applicant and the neighbors, the subcommittee here is recommending to deny the appeal and approve the non-conforming use permit and off-street parking exceptions for the revised version of the project relative to the findings and conditions in Attachment A. I'll let the members of the subcommittee... I'll let the members of the subcommittee discuss with you their thoughts relative to the new design and the meetings that we had with the neighbors and the applicants. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I just have one question. One of your comparison table, alternate one, and that's actually a staff, which I thought was the best alternate, that's the staff alternate?
Alternate number one that we have identified in this chart was relative to the previous staff report, in which the appellants were looking at the project site and saying, "You need to conform to the requirements of the zoning district." So if you do the math there, this is essentially what you'd be able to come up with there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? None? Okay, we have a series of speakers. I'm going to give five minutes to the applicants. See, there's a couple of, there's JR Rodine and Christina Valentine. You can decide who's going to take the five minutes, or you want to split it, or however you want to do it, and the rest of the comments will be two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Board President Horsley, Honorable Board Members. I'm JR Rodine, and I'm here representing Mike and Christina Valentine, the applicants. We're going to be able to go through our presentation easily within five minutes, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Christina. What we show here are some structural compromises that have been undertaken, and we'll have pictorial illustrations in a moment, but moving through these in the essence of time, the key changes are highlighted above, so I won't be redundant and read through them. What I would like to do at this moment, and it's, and I apologize for this being very late at the 11th hour, but after working with our architect and CAD drawings, we have decided that we'd also like to reduce the second-floor side setback one additional foot, which would then reduce the square footage down to 2,552 square feet. It doesn't show on this because we didn't receive the CAD information from our architect until late yesterday afternoon, but that would further reduce the total square footage of the house, and it would basically articulate and reduce the mass of the second story from the street scene. It wouldn't do much from a side perspective, from what the street scene would produce, it does add additional articulation, and we think it's a very nice enhancement. Again, it would reduce the square footage by 35 square feet. Okay. And what we have here in our presentation are four different views, front, rear, right-side, left-side. So, as I was just speaking, when we take a look at the left-side front elevation, we would have an inset of an additional foot on the left side, so that more closely conforms to the inset on the right side. I think it's a nice architectural enhancement, and it's something that we're happy to do. Okay. The key item on the third page here that I would like to make a comment on is that our landscape architect prepared an off-street parking plan as well, which includes a driveway, and it speaks to the finding and condition number eight and the staff report for the off-street parking exception. And I would like to note for the record that while the staff report indicates that there is one proposed off, excuse me, off-street uncovered park, driveway car, parking space, we actually have two that we'll be able to provide, so we'd just like to have that included in the record. Thank you.
You should probably, go ahead.
Okay. We can skip through that.
So, immediately following our meeting with the subcommittee, we made great efforts to try and share our newly revised plans with the neighborhood, and just to answer any questions, we contacted the appellant group and offered a time to meet with them, which was on Monday, April 29th, at seven o'clock, to review the plans, although they were public record at that point. We figured it was a nice gesture to meet with them and answer any questions that they had. A neighbor and friend was gracious enough to offer her home to host a wine and cheese open house, where she invited neighbors from her surrounding streets and said, and we basically brought our plans, laid them out, and answered any questions from any of the neighbors at that point. And then finally, with any of our remaining free time, we walked up and down the neighborhood. You know, we didn't want to pressure people, we haven't tried to pressure people through this entire process, but we knocked on doors to see if people had seen the plans, if they wanted to see the revisions, and if they had any questions. After doing so, we have collected over 50 signatures of support for the newly revised plans within our neighborhood.
We need to move, we've got 40 seconds.
And finally, I'd just like to wrap up by extending my sincere thanks to the Board of Supervisors for allowing us the opportunity to meet with the subcommittee. Especially, I'd like to thank Supervisor Carol Groom and Supervisor Tissier for serving on that subcommittee and giving their time. We listened to the concerns on April 9th, and we worked closely with our architect. We're excited about these newly revised plans, we feel like they will accommodate our family. We've reduced bulk and mass while designing a home that will fit the scale and character of the neighborhood. And I'd like to note that all of the neighbors that we've gotten a chance to share our plans with.
Could you summarize quickly?
Absolutely. Yes, they believe we've made considerate compromises and hope that we can move forward, and we just encourage you to deny the appeal, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. The, we have a number of speakers here. Looks like Mr. Klow, followed by Jenny Johnstone. Oops, I'm sorry. Miss.
Members of the Supervisor Board, I'd like to read the letter that I had sent to a couple of you anyway. "To my knowledge, there's no precedent to justify a decision to approve this plan to remodel extensively on a grossly substandard lot. Having spent over 30 years as a Realtor in this area, plan approval meeting all setback requirements, I'm sure that the purchasers would have been advised of the fact that they were purchasing a non-conforming lot. Additionally, the applicant is a licensed contractor and is well aware that building regulations have a real purpose and benefits the community as a whole. When my youngest daughter and her husband bought their first home, while they wanted to buy in the Los Alameda School District, they couldn't afford it. Instead, they bought in the Willows. The Laurel Elementary and Synol in Hillview Schools are excellent schools also. And I guess it all boils down to that you can't always have what you want at the expense of others."
Thank you. Jenny Johnstone, could you not do that, please? Sir, could you not applaud? You don't need applauding or booing. Jenny Johnstone, followed by Tim Unger.
Yes, good morning, Supervisors. I am reading a statement from Patricia McBrayer. She was not able to be here today, but I also concur with her statement. The percentage here may be changed because of the new information, but at any rate, Patricia states, "The county seems to continually look at this issue from the starting point of what does the applicant want, rather than what does our ordinance say? If you are comfortable with giving the applicants a 44% floor area increase above and beyond what a brand-new home on the lot would be allowed, with all of the setback, daylight plane, parking, et cetera, exceptions required to accommodate such bulk on a small lot, and calling it nearly in compliance with the standards and in proportion to the lot and not special privilege, by all means, approve the proposed development. But I find it hard to believe that any reasonable person could say that. This is a clear case of special privilege. By all means, we would like to see the lot develop, but develop it appropriately in a way that gives the applicant a reasonable degree of relief from the standards, but fundamentally retains the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Approve the proposed development with the condition that all new construction respect the front and rear setbacks. Approve the proposed development with the conditions that the appellant-proposed compromised parameters are met. Thank you, Patricia McBrayer."
Thank you, Ms. Johnstone. Tim Unger, followed by Stavros Prionas.
Good morning, Supervisors. Last time we were here, you denied the request for the exception and appointed a subcommittee and said, "Let's get together and compromise." Supervisor Tissier suggested somewhere between 2,200 and 2,300 square feet, down from the over 2,600, or over the 2,550 square-foot plan that was submitted at the time. Prior to Mr. Egomire's 11th-hour adjustment that we just heard, and the restatement of the statistics, and Mr. Rodine's proposal to reduce the plan couple of or so square feet, not only was there no compromise in terms of total square footage, it actually got larger by about 75 square feet. And most people view compromise as an opportunity to move towards the middle. The appellants came back with a proposal that was almost the maximum of Supervisor Tissier's proposed, 2,300 square feet, which is about 2,700 square feet. Now, with the latest 11th-hour adjustments, we're now two feet above what was proposed that you originally rejected. And I did a remodel in my home 10 years ago, 5,700 square-feet lot, 2,350 square-foot house. I would have loved to have had 82 percent, that's the new percentage of the volume. Then I could have sold my house, made a lot more money. But I played within the rules, and the county never came back to me and said, "Hey, Mr. Unger, you're leaving a lot of money on the table." We would ask that you deny this proposal, that we work within the guidelines that were established for the original negotiation and get closer to the 2,300 or below the 2,300 square feet. Thank you.
Mr. Unger, Stavros Prionas, and Jim Camarillo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stavros Prionas. Myself, my wife, and two children have been in this area for about 40 years of our lives. I have spent 24 years of those 40 being an employee at Stanford University. My wife has worked, is still working there, after 38 years. We know the neighborhood, we love the neighborhood, we love the people who live there, we thoroughly enjoy and love newcomers with children coming into the neighborhood. However, we object when individuals try to take advantage of the rules and regulations and try to build huge houses in small lots. When we bought our lot, it was supposed to be 6,000 square feet, but then the street cut through it, and we ended up having only 5,200 square feet. But we obeyed the rules, and we built a house with three bedrooms and a two-garage situation, and we are very, very happy with it. We think it would be inappropriate for you to approve the construction of this house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prionas. Jim Camarillo, followed by Gary Marandino.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Jim Camarillo. I live right across the street from the project, proposed project, on behalf of myself and Michael Eldridge, who could not make it this morning. He and I would like to read the statement. "Please require that the applicants create a house in line with the compromise guidelines requested by the board supervisors' meeting last month. The updated proposed plan from the applicants is not a compromise as requested by you at the public hearing on the matter. It only continues the trend of nip-and-tuck changes to a plan that, from the beginning, that has asked for significant relief from the required building standards and neighborhood comparable situations. You, as a board, rejected the 2,550 square-foot proposed and asked for something more modest in maybe the 2,200 to 2,300 square-foot range for the substandard non-conforming lot. The updated proposal ignores the compromise directive and guidance from you. Compromise means meet in the middle. I understand the compromise plan will need to be allowed some relief, and we accept the guidance perimeters from the members of the board. The applicants have not moved anywhere near a compromise and have, in fact, returned with the proposal which is bigger, would increase the footprint and even steps above the hard perimeters like 50% lot coverage. The applicants have, in fact, returned to you with the proposal that is bigger, encroaches further into the backyard, retains four bedrooms, and only one-car garage on a half-size lot. The applicants have, with the attitude of compromise, come to you with researched facts regarding the county building perimeters and the degree of relief various options would require. There are, of course, many other options, but we all look to you. Please, please reject this."
Thanks, Mr. Camarillo. And Gary Marandino, followed by Sandy Sloan.
Good morning, my name's Gary Marandino. I live at 261 Vine Street, right around the corner from the project. And actually, I want to go on the record to say, in listening to what was going on this morning about Mr. Ayers and about the LGBD, you know, it kind of puts things in perspective when you're appearing in front of the board. And I want to just congratulate the people for what you're going through. I want to read a short statement to you. "The proposed plan does not adequately address the supervisor's collective comments nor the appellant group's concerns of the house being too big in proportion to the lot. Through the negotiating process, we expected their overall size of the house to be reduced, not to remain the same or get larger. Continuing to make new construction in the front, continuing to place new construction in the front yard setback, while continuing the situation at the rear of the lot worse for the adjacent neighbors, is really simply robbing Peter to pay Paul. And we're still continuing to have a four-bedroom house with a one-car garage on a substandard lot. This constant little nipping and tucking is a distraction that does not really address the larger issues. And I think you noticed that this morning, that once again, we have some small little adjustments at the last minute that, you know, we hadn't had a chance to look at, and neither have you. I was involved with the meetings with the supervisors, and we've certainly talked with the applicants. There was no real negotiation or compromise from both sides, merely the same ideas presented by the applicants with no significant changes other than increases in square footage. As appellants, we put forth a very generous proposal on their overall size suggesting a 2,200-plus square-foot home that is both reasonable and large for the existing lot. And, I might add, it's what the supervisors suggested as an alternative."
Thanks, Mr. Marandino, and Sandy Sloan, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Sandy Sloan, I live on Stanford Avenue around the corner. I want to speak specifically about all the neighborhood's support for our appeal, all those who stood up at the last supervisor's meeting, who supported the appeal. Many of those could still support the appeal, and many of them could not be here today. We know the applicant submitted a petition with other neighbors in support of the revised plan. I talked with one of my neighbors who was approached with this petition. The representative of the applicant said two things. First, they said, "Please sign this petition because our plans are legal." The appellants have never claimed that the plans are illegal. What we have claimed is that the use permit findings, we believe, cannot be made because the proposal is out of proportion to the lot and seems to grant a special privilege. Even if the FAR goes from 84% to 83%, it is still 33%, a larger FAR than anything else on the street. Second, the petition said the applicants have revised their plans several times. We realize that, but just because they have done some nip-and-tuck doesn't mean that they have made progress. As other people have stated, we do not feel the applicants have listened to the neighborhood or the Board of Supervisors and reduced the square footage in a meaningful way. Finally, I want to Finally, I want to say that the staff report mentions that perhaps proportionality is a matter of aesthetics. We respectfully disagree. Our neighborhood does not have design review. Aesthetics is a design review matter, but proportionality is mathematical. It is specific. It is based on zoning regulations. We urge you to uphold our appeal. And then finally, it's very confusing, I would think to you too, to make these last-minute changes on a tiny screen, and the neighborhood has not had a chance to review those. So perhaps another appeal is in order if you do not uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Sloan. And the last is Lenny Roberts.
I'm Lenny Roberts, speaking for Committee for Green Foothills, and I just wanted to state that we are in strong support of the neighbor's position, the appellants, and we do believe that this particular project sets a new standard of nonconformity in all the years that we've been looking at projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, just make a quick comment as that. You know, I thought their last, I mean, I really appreciate our subcommittee working with the neighbors and the applicants, but I thought we had talked about 2,300 square feet or thereabout, and three bedrooms versus four, and I didn't expect to see this being now protruding into the backyard. And to give you an example, I was taking a look at, like, 2 Perry Avenue, where the parcel size is actually 500 square feet larger. They were held to a house of 2,045 square feet. So I'd be glad to listen to what the subcommittee thinks, but I have a tendency, or my feeling is to approve the appeal.
I'd be happy to address some, because I had suggested the subcommittee, and I did say I'd like to perhaps see it smaller, but I also believe when you look to compromise, you look at the architect, who is the one that sort of creates this. The biggest thing I heard from my colleagues that day was the bulk in the front was really not acceptable, and can we do something about that? And when the architect, first off, remember, it's a nonconforming parcel and a nonconforming house. So what the applicants had done when they came back with an alternative was to remove a good portion of the bulk from the front, add a smaller bedroom in the back, remove the bath. And the whole idea is, when you're looking at it from the streetscape, is how is that going to look? You don't see the bedroom in the back. That bedroom in the back was actually suggested by one of our colleagues. I'd like to see if you could put on the screen the aerial view. One of the last ones. Okay, if you take a look, oops, there it is, the aerial view. If you look at that house in proportion to that lot, and then you look to the one to the left, to that lot, there's almost the same type of proportionality. If you look behind, you've got these huge houses that take up almost all of the lot. And you look up to your left, to me, you know, you have to look at what you're trying to accomplish. From the front, you've got a better-looking streetscape, you've accommodated what the applicant would like without imposing on the neighborhood. And then you look in the neighborhood, and from this aerial, to me, those houses are just as big. They may be bigger lots, but the houses are also much bigger. So I really do think there has been a compromise. I know there'll be some people that aren't going to be happy. I get that. You know, unfortunately, in this position, you don't always get to make everyone happy. But at the end of the day, I do think there were significant compromises made. I do think it addresses the bulk in the front, which I think is the hardest one in a neighborhood because you don't want to have all that bulk in the front. And I, in looking at these aerial pictures, I mean, these lots, most of them look almost identical. The lots may be bigger, but the houses are much bigger. So I think because it's a nonconforming parcel with a nonconforming house, I think the applicant has reached proportionality, and I do believe that they have done a good job in trying to come up with some kind of an alternative that meets the comments that were made by this board. And the key one was the bulk, and can you move things from the front to the back? And I think they accomplished all that. And so I am going to recommend that we deny the appeal.
Any other comments, board members? Supervisor Grum, did you want to comment?
One of the issues that's been discussed great is that this is a nonconforming lot. In approving a nonconforming parcel, we have special, to grant a special use permit, you must find five findings, and this is another place where there seems to be a disagreement. However, when we reviewed these plans with the Valentines, and we spent, Supervisor Tissier and I spent an awful long time with our legal staff going through these five findings. And we did come to the conclusion that we can find, we can find all of those five proposals, that the development is proportioned to the size of the parcel and the lot, which is built, which I think Supervisor Tissier just discussed. All opportunities to acquire additional contiguous land in order to achieve conformity have been investigated and proven to be infeasible. We did get a, we checked on that. The proposed development is as nearly in conformance with the zoning regulations currently in effect as is reasonably possible. We believe that is the case here. A use permit approval does not constitute a granting of special privileges. And I want to say, on behalf of the subcommittee, we did not think about special privileges. We tried to look at this lot and this house, and because it is a nonconforming lot, it does have different rules or different objectives for approval. So I think that we can make those findings, and I'm going to stand with the recommendation of the subcommittee also.
Any other comments? Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Just one question that maybe Mr. Egemeyer could help me understand, or Mr. Rodin. It was said a couple of times that the proposed development actually got larger. Could you help me understand that? Because your number seems to be smaller.
What I'll focus on are some revisions to the plans. And go through here, if you bear with me for a second. Okay, that's, here's the first floor. So the first floor changes are in the upper-right side of that floor plan. It's the new bedroom. And just outside that door there is a new mudroom. On the old plan, that you considered two months ago, that mudroom was the laundry room. Now, we go to this floor, the second floor above that, and you can see, basically in the center is the new laundry room. That's where a bedroom was before that they moved down. So essentially, the way I looked at the plans, this laundry room is a little bit larger than the one on the first floor in the old plan. And so that's my interpretation of the drawings where it grew. Does that help?
So it is a little bit larger.
It is a little bit larger.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just let me make a comment. You've had your opportunity to speak. It's now time for the board to speak. Just one thing.
Let me ask another question of Mr. Egemeyer, if I may. The comparison table that you gave us.
Yes.
The proposal, 2,682. At last count, it is now 2,552. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So it's not larger?
I'm sorry, it's, what I was saying is relative to the, what was considered by the board two months ago under alternative number three, the 2,550.
But I'm discussing the proposed project.
The original, that's correct, from the original first project, yes.
The original project was 2,682. Today, it's 2,552.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, just a couple of quick comments. And first of all, it's the fact that you, just because you can't see the back bedroom, that doesn't, that really doesn't negate the fact that the requirement for the back in the backyard is to have a 20-foot setback, and where, you know, if we just say that the setback doesn't count as long as you can't see it, then why have a setback at all? So, you know, why have any setbacks if you're going to allow setbacks in the front to be ignored, and setbacks on the side, and setbacks in the back? There's just too many, there's too many requirements to overlook setbacks on this particular property. And I go back to number 2 Perry, where the, there, the property's 500 square feet larger, and the total house was held at 2,045 feet. Maybe we did them a disservice, and we should have allowed them to make a larger house. It just seems to me, it's not a question of the house being too big, it's just that it seems to me that we're making all these exceptions that I just don't think we should be making all those exceptions. Now, I will grant that the front is somewhat better, although I would prefer to see the old house taken down. I just can't imagine having a one-foot setback from the property line from the, on the ground floor, but nevertheless, it's there, and I guess we can't force the builder, or the owners, to move that back. It's just that there's just too many exceptions to this project that I just don't, I just cannot support the project, and I would, I'm going to support the appeal.
Maybe if I could make a couple of comments. The reason I put that aerial on is really to look at that proportionality, and being a nonconforming parcel and a nonconforming house, that's where the exceptions come in. And I guess you could say, do I want this exception or this one? That's part of the whole idea of these types of parcels. And again, I'll go back to looking at that aerial, those, some of those houses look even bigger on some of those lots. And so I guess it really depends on how you sort of view this. Obviously, we agree to disagree here, but I'm going to actually make a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the subcommittee's recommendation.
Second.
I'm going to take a roll call vote on this. Motion and second.
Supervisor Pine?
The motion is to support the subcommittee recommendation?
Yes.
I'm going to vote in favor.
Supervisor Grum?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
President Horsley?
No.
Supervisor Tissier?
Aye.
Okay. That's done. Okay, the next item is item number five, is a public hearing to consider resolutions, planning, and building.
My name is Jim Egemeyer, and at this moment, I'd like to introduce Matt Soibert, Senior Planner with the Planning and Building Department. This has been his project, and I've asked him to make today's presentation to you. Ma'am?
Thank you, Director Egemeyer, President Horsley, members of the board, members of the public. And it's, I did a lot of work on this project, but it's not my project. I had an awful lot of help along the way, and I will, I want to acknowledge a lot of the people who worked on this project. First of all, I just want to introduce the project briefly. This project is a pretty large project, actually. It's a climate action plan for the unincorporated parts of San Mateo County. Also, there is amendments to the general plan for the county. There's a new element being proposed, the energy and climate change element. There are also amendments to other parts of the general plan. And this is pursuant to CEQA, we needed to do an EIR, so we did an EIR in this project as well. The general plan element and amendments is, provides the guiding policies and principles. The implementing actions and the greenhouse gas reductions are identified in the climate action plan, and the climate action plan is maintained separately from the general plan to allow for flexibility and for ongoing updates and revisions, whereas the general plan is not intended to be updated as often. Greenhouse gases, what are they? They are carbon dioxide, methane, and other gases that trap heat and raise the temperature of the earth's atmosphere. It has resultant effects of ice cap melt and sea level rise, and a projected sea level rise of 14 inches or so by 2050, much more by 2,100, and raising temperatures 2 to 3 degrees Fahrenheit by 2050. We'll also likely see extreme weather events with more frequency, both storm events and drought events. So the focus then on the climate action plan is, what can we do as a county to help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and then mitigate the effects of climate change? At the same time, we realize as a coastal county with a lot of forested land, we are also going to be subject to climate change and its impacts, no matter what we do. And so we have also included policies to adapt to the impacts of climate change, including sea level rise and a number of other topics, which I'll get into later. I want to just briefly go through the plan development. The project started in early 2011. We received a grant from the Federal Stimulus Program from the Department of Energy. We were able to hire PMC as a consultant. PMC has done a number of climate action plans throughout the state, and they did the bulk of the heavy lifting with the technical analysis, the greenhouse gas emissions, and much of the writing, as well as assisting with outreach and writing the environmental impact report. We have Tammy Seal here from PMC. If there's any specific technical or scientific questions, I probably will defer to her, as that's why we've hired them. So we spent much of 2011 doing technical analysis, developing our greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the unincorporated county. We spent the next few months developing policy recommendations. And then this winter, we drafted the climate action plan, the general plan amendment, and the draft EIR. And we went to the Planning Commission twice for review this spring, and then we are here at the Board of Supervisors. So I mentioned that there was, this has really been a community effort. There was a lot of participation. We had a steering committee that met a number of times throughout this process. It included representatives, some of whom who are here today, from committee for Green Foothills, Sierra Club, the Association of Realtors, Sam Carr, the Farm Bureau, PG&E, Commissioner Gail Slocum of the Planning Commission, Sam Trans, the Building Trades Council, and Sam Seda. We also had a technical advisory committee, which was composed of county staff from Public Works, Parks, Health, and Planning and Building. We also received comments through the vulnerability assessment technical advisory committee. This was a subcommittee that met mostly through a webinar or virtual format several times to talk about adaptation and vulnerability and how to adapt to climate change. This included representatives from the Coastal Commission and the Bay Conservation and Development Commission. And I also want to mention that the Bay Conservation and Development Commission and the Airdristic, BAAQMD, provided helpful comments on our first draft of the climate action plan. We also had a project website that ran up through this entire project. With the project website, we were able to do online surveys. We did an online survey that helped us develop policies. We also did mailings twice to all of the homeowners association in the unincorporated county, and we held three public workshops through this process. We also had help on the draft portion from Save the Bay and from the Office of Supervisor Pine. And I also want to acknowledge the efforts of, in our staff, of Brian Albini, who is in our graphics department, but who was really instrumental in being the sort of backup planner on this project and helping with all the website. Just briefly, the first major project, or part of this project, is the energy and climate change element. This is a new element to the county's general plan, which dates from 1986, and of course, in 1986, did not include policies related to climate change. This element integrates the climate action plan into the county's policy framework, and it contains the goals and policies for greenhouse gas reductions and adaptation. And these are listed on this next slide. I'm not going to go through all of them, but in general, it's talking about maximizing energy efficiency, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, promoting renewable energy, and sustainable agricultural practices, and reducing water use. And then there's also goals related to adapting to climate change, which includes identifying and preparing for climate change impacts, including the impacts of sea level rise, and for enhancing the capacity of natural and man-made systems. So that's one. So that's one chapter we're proposing to add to the general plan. Again, I mentioned the general plan's from 1986, so we also needed to do some concurrent updates to other parts of the general plan. This is not intended to be a comprehensive update to the entire general plan. We have been doing efforts to update parts of the general plan as we've been able to with resources and staff, including the North Fair Oaks Plan and the housing element. And this is another in those efforts. But we also recognize that there's parts of the general plan in other chapters, the transportation chapter, the hazards chapter, that needed updating, so it's integrated and it's not, it's not internally contradictory. So that's why we made subsequent amendments to other parts of the general plan. This includes a couple items that also are integrated with the climate action plan and the general plan amendment, including complete streets policies, which will help us stay, complete streets are streets that are designed for all users, bicyclists, walkers, seniors, as well as automobiles and transit users. And this is a policy that the board also adopted earlier this year. We're now putting this in the general plan, and this will keep us eligible for funding from the MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, One Bay Area Grant Funding. So that is also part of this. We also are including policies on preserving and enhancing wildlife corridors at the suggestion of the Committee for Green Foothills. So that's the general plan amendment. Again, that provides the broad policies. The climate action plan is a, the specific implementation document. A number of jurisdictions have done climate action plans. We're somewhat unique in that we also are proposing a general plan amendment. The climate action plan is a strategic plan to address energy efficiency and climate change in the unincorporated county. It began with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. It set a greenhouse gas reduction target. And then we established policies and measures to get to that target, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and also to adapt to the impacts of climate change. We also have a, as you've probably seen, the document's quite long. We have an implementation document which identifies, implements specific implementation actions and departments who would be responsible for implementing those actions. This, I won't go through this, but this shows you the contents, which I've briefly summarized, I think, already. Again, I did mention the targets, so this, this state has set a target of 15% greenhouse gas reduction by 2020 from the baseline year of 2005. And we are actually, with this climate action plan, we will, if we implement it, we're projecting we will achieve our target of 17%. So we're actually exceeding the state target by 2%. How are we doing that? By a number of greenhouse gas reduction measures, which are listed here. I'm not going to go through all of them, although I will highlight a few. In addition to the greenhouse gas reduction measures and their beneficial impact on reducing climate change, there's a number of co-benefits, which we've identified in our document, including improving air quality, improving public health, supporting the local economy, reducing water usage, improving mobility. I mentioned the complete streets policy, which improves mobility, and protecting natural The Planning Commission was very interested in finding out which are the most significant greenhouse gas reduction measures that we're proposing here. And so I've listed those for you. There's an awful lot of them in the document, but the most significant ones in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions are commercial energy efficiency, the green building ordinance, waste diversion, and zero waste, renewable energy, and construction idling and off-road technologies. We have a number of other measures proposed, but these are the, sort of the biggest bang for the buck. Again, yes, sorry.
Just a second. That's okay. What do you mean by sustainable agriculture? Are you talking about a specific kind of agriculture, or?
We did coordinate with the Farm Bureau, and we talked with them. I think one of the things we're talking about is with sustainable agriculture is reducing the impact of farm equipment emissions. It also could include things that have been mentioned, such as there's projected to be a water issue as the climate changes, and ways to assure a better water supply for agriculture, including small ponds, storage, water storage ponds. And I think that the agricultural community has indicated that they're very adaptable, and there's, it's a little unpredictable as to what the specific impacts will be in terms of what kind of crops they can grow. But they were very interested in this plan and in its development, and said that they can, they can adapt, but they want to be kept informed and coordinated with.
Getting off-site storage, water storage, or ponds is very difficult on the coast side because of, you know, the way it ends up, you have the red-legged frogs and Chambucag garter snakes become, becomes habitat for them. So it's very expensive, very costly, and in some cases, millions of dollars to create those. So it's very difficult. And off-road technology, I guess, also has to do with converting tractors to less polluting.
Correct. Yes. And I think one thing this brings up is that, what we're proposing here is a climate action plan. It doesn't have any specific zoning or regulatory changes in and of itself. It's more of a roadmap of how to get there. So it's identifying topic areas that we can work on. And I, we recognize that this issue of agricultural ponds has come up before, and it is a permitting quandary, but I think it's important to identify the issue for agriculture. So thank you for that. Again, I think I touched on this earlier, but we recognize also that if the county does implement this, that we will still be subject to the impacts of climate change, because the climate is changing anyway. And we're especially vulnerable because we have a large amount of coast on the bay shoreline and the coast, the Pacific Ocean coast. We have a large amount of forested areas, and we have significant amount of agriculture. So we focused on several topic areas in our look at adaptation to climate change, agriculture and forestry, fire, the built environment in general, which includes both private property as well as infrastructure, roads, natural sources, resources, water, and public health. And we focused also on a effort to look at sea level rise adaptation on both the bay and the coast shorelines. This is meant to be an ongoing guide for policy and program development and a working document that we will continue to work with. We're somewhat in the early stages of adaptation planning, but we've recognized the importance of coordinating regionally with other cities and with CCAG and the regional agencies. Finally, the, because we're amending the general plan, we needed to do an EIR for CEQA, so we did do that. It covers both the climate action plan and the changes to the general plan. We did receive two comments, and both were supportive. So we've, asking you to certify the EIR by making a finding of overriding considerations, statement of overriding considerations. In terms of next steps, we will continue to coordinate with, I mentioned some of our regional partners, CCAG, and they have a process called the RICAPS process. I'm not going to go into great detail on that, but a number of other jurisdictions in San Mateo County are doing climate action plans with the assistance of a template developed by CCAG, and we've been involved in that effort as well. Our project goes a little beyond that, because we're also looking at adaptation, and we're doing a general plan amendment. But this has been a really good coordinating activity for all of us. Again, I mentioned that this does, this by itself doesn't change zoning, so we will then need to work on implementation. We've identified agencies and departments within the county that need to implement this, but this by itself does not allocate any funding, so we will need to work on implementation as well as monitoring. And we also, there's a recommendation in the report that we, as we work towards our goal of reducing greenhouse gases by 2020, that we would report back to your board every two years.
Okay.
So thank you. Again, we have someone from our consulting team here, if you have any specific technical questions. And I believe there's some members of the steering committee who might be here as well. So thank you for your consideration.
There are. Before we do that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And any questions from the board? There, I just have one. How do you actually, what kind of process is going to be in place to actually measure our, how effective we are at reducing greenhouse gases? Especially being that 60% of all the greenhouse gases are actually like transportation.
Right. So we have, our consultant, PMC, has developed a monitoring tool that we will be using to monitor the progress we make. A lot of it involves sort of modeling, which is what we did with the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. We get, can we get, we can get information from groups such as PG&E on energy usage, and then we can track that over time. With some of the thing, we also can get information from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission about automobile vehicle miles traveled. So that will enable us to do the monitoring.
Okay, thank you. Good report. We have two speakers, Josh Schoenfeld, followed by Lenny Roberts.
My name is Josh Schoenfeld. I'm here on behalf of Save the Bay. I'd like to thank the county staff, PMC, and for the Supervisors for moving forward with this important adaptation planning for the county of San Mateo. Our focus is sea level rise, and San Mateo County is, it's important to begin doing this work in San Mateo County, because it is the county in the state of California that has more property at risk flooding than any other county in the entire state. Includes $24 billion worth of infrastructure. And this isn't just potential flooding in the future from sea level rise. These are impacts that are already happening right now, and people that are already at risk right now. So there was a report from the Pacific Institute on sea level rise in California that they put together, and they identified San Mateo County as already having 80,000 people, 69,000 employees that are at risk from flooding. There's 39 EPA-regulated hazardous sites and 300 miles of roadways. And I think many of us can imagine where those roadways are, as we're talking Dumbarton Bridge, San Mateo Bridge, Highway 101. There's a lot of areas that are going to be, need to be protected into the future.
Pescadero Road as well.
Lots of railroad. Yep, there's a lot in there. There's wastewater treatment plants, correctional facilities, parks such as Coney Point, the airport, and these areas go beyond just incorporated, unincorporated. It's the whole bay shore. There's entire neighborhoods that are going to be at risk, such as the Mobile Home Parks in Redwood City, which is a mix of unincorporated and incorporated, as you know. And as I mentioned, these impacts are already happening. I wanted to read just a short paragraph from an article that came out in December. This was during the King Tides event, which are a good indicator of the type of flooding that we might see happening on a more regular basis. This is a statement that was issued by--
I will let you continue as long as it's not five minutes.
It's not five minutes, I promise. This was a statement that was issued by the Sheriff's Office. It said that "The King Tides of this past weekend essentially left the women's transitional facility, an island detention structure, as the water level at times prevented access to the jail on Maple Street. On Thursday before the additional rain from the weekend, the street flooded to the extent the truck bringing the inmates their daily food became stuck in the rising tides for an hour and a half."
Would you turn your cell phone off, please?
All jail programs had to be canceled, as staff and volunteers couldn't get in or out of the facility, and all inmate visits from friends and family were likewise canceled. That happened this past December. So these impacts will increase. We're really glad to see the county beginning this planning effort. Lots of work to do. And lastly, there is a workshop today on climate adaptation planning for San Mateo County from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Sabrato Center for Nonprofits in Redwood Shores. So if anyone's interested, there's an opportunity. So thank you to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenfeld, and Lenny Roberts.
Good morning again. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills, and I was a member of the steering committee, as was Alice Kaufman, my colleague with Committee for Green Foothills. We kind of teamed, teamed up on this one. And there's a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this plan. It's very com, very integrated and complex. I'd like to kind of second all the comments that are, that have been made about sea level rise, because we, that's with us right now. I mean, our, we have many, many facilities that are already vulnerable. And particularly on the bay side, they're not all, most of them are not within the county unincorporated area, but they affect everybody. On the coast side, we have low-lying lands as well, and Pescadero is one of them. You hear, Supervisor Horsley, hears about this very regularly. And, but when you consider the relative importance of the issue, you really have to look at the bay side, which has got so much infrastructure at risk. So, you know, knowing how political bodies do hear from individuals who are very upset about something, but there's a bigger picture as well. So I think we need to consider all of the risks that we, that we face. And I think in one way, it's kind of fortunate that 60% of all of our greenhouse gas emissions are from transportation, because that means there are fewer emissions from some stationary sources that other counties have that are very considerable, like the refineries in the East Bay. So we have to work on transportation, obviously, to get the biggest bang for that effort. And the last thing I wanted to say was, on the, you have to adopt, it was kind of glossed over, you have to adopt a statement of overriding considerations for wildlife species that may be impacted by certain reduction measures through loss of habitat or blockage of movement corridors, electrocution from transmission lines and/or turbines and transmission lines with wind turbines. So I think the most important thing, and it is in the document, that we have to avoid those impacts to the greatest degree feasible. And even so, we recognize that everything we do does impact species, and some of them are unavoidable. Unfortunately, often people associate green projects, technology, new technology, or for energy development, as so overridingly important that they, that they ignore the impacts to special status species. And I think our county has a more nuanced approach to that, so I would like to thank the staff for that.
I agree. Thank you, Lenny. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Let's, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Did you, I'm sorry if I cut you off.
That's all right.
Okay. So now, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Comment, too.
When, earlier on, we talked about agriculture and reducing the carbon, the carbon, the carbon emissions from tractors and other kinds of things. Through the Bay Area Air Quality District, there's a number of, quite a substantial sum of money available through the Carl Moyer Fund. We do not take advantage of that in this county. We leave a lot of dollars on the table, and I've sent, I send reminders to Fred and to the Farm Bureau on a regular basis, but we need to be better at that, because we can upgrade our tractors and upgrade our diesel engines and upgrade even some of our fishing boats with these funds.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. And there's no question that climate change and global warming is really the issue of our times. And, you know, I commend all the hard work that's gone into this, this plan. And I know for me, there's really been kind of a sobering realization that for so long we focused on preventing global warming and reducing CO2 output. And we have to continue to do that, and the plan, of course, calls out ways to do so. But sadly, we have put so much carbon into the environment that our environment is going to change. It is changing now, and it will change significantly, even if we stopped all carbon emission. And that's, that's a hard thing to get your head around. You know, we've, you know, we're already at, the scientists like to refer to, you know, the, what's it, million of, millions of, 400 millions, I can't even say it, 400, the amount of carbon is--
A lot.
Is a lot. Thank you. So a number of folks have talked about the sea level rise and the fact that it will have a very big impact on our county. Over the last year or so, I've been thinking a great deal about this and have started to invest a lot of my time in, in this issue. I'm fortunate to serve on the BCDC. I'm a member of the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. And our charter is to potentially put on a tax measure to raise funds to do wetland restoration, which would help mitigate sea level rise. And I also serve on the San Francisco Creek JPA, which is working on flood control issues with sea level rise in mind. So my plan is to continue to, to work on this issue. I, I hope to have some kind of a convening in the county in September so that we can begin a dialogue about it. This is an issue that obviously no one city, no, no one county can, can solve, and, but we have to begin to address it. So more on that to follow. Just a couple other points. I think it's important to have these report backs on our progress. We suggested that they, they be every two years, and, you know, the extent we could have reports every year, I think that would be, be beneficial. And then finally, this, this emphasis of coordinating across jurisdictions is just critical, and the county, you know, can and should take a leadership role there, as we have done in, in other areas, like the plastic bag ban. So again, I thank everyone for their hard work.
Thanks Supervisor Pye. Any other comments? So, do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll move to adopt a statement of overriding consideration, amend the San Mateo County general plan, and adopt the San Mateo County Energy Efficiency Climate Action Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Excellent report. Thanks very much. You know, in, one of the things that Supervisor Groom and I, we're not exactly ready to talk about this, but we are going to get up for five minutes and walk around. We've been sitting here for an awful long time, and we're actually going to do some of the exercises that Supervisor Groom once recommended. But we won't do the exercise today, but we're going to get up for about five minutes.
Walk around.
We recommend that, okay.
Well, I was ready. I was ready to start jumping jacks.
We'll be back in five minutes. Ah, yeah. Good morning.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back in session. We're, it's now item number six, the Health Director's Report. Beverly Beasley Johnson? Good morning.
Good morning, President Horstley, members of the board, Mr. Holland and Mr. Byers. I, of course, am not the Health Director, Beverly Johnson, Human Services Agency Director, but I am joined by my colleagues, Jean Fraser, Director of the Health System, and Donna Valencourt, Director of our County Human Resources Department. And we're here today to give you a, just a brief presentation on healthcare reform and what it will mean for San Mateo County and our residents. As you know, beginning this coming January, all citizens are required to enroll in and receive health insurance or face a tax penalty. The goal is to provide affordable insurance options through either the Medi-Cal program for the very low income, or federal subsidies for middle-income individuals and families that will ultimately provide them with access to both health insurance and to health care. In San Mateo County, we have the potential to assist about forty-seven thousand uninsured residents who will qualify for either Medi-Cal or private insurance purchased through Coverit California, which is the state agency that will distribute not only the subsidies, but will assist people in retaining their health, their private health insurance after the first open enrollment period. The Human Services Agency will continue to maintain coverage for all of those who are enrolled under either expanded Medi-Cal or the traditional Medi-Cal programs. We are fast approaching the open, first open enrollment period, which begins October first of this year. I actually counted it out. I think we have a hundred and seventeen days before we go live. The first open enrollment period will open October first and will close at the end of March 2014. There will be exceptions to open enrollment, and those who have qualifying events, much like we see in our, in our health coverage, would be able to enter or exit the health insurance products during the year, but they would have to have a qualifying event like marriage or birth or adoption or divorce, something that would qualify them to, to enter the, the system at a different date. Differently, Medi-Cal has no open and closed enrollment. Medi-Cal is always open and available to our lowest-income residents. And we, we are committed to ensuring that the residents of our county who have eligibility for a health coverage under the Medi-Cal program continue to, to have that message loud and clear, that they may apply for Medi-Cal at any time during the year. Coverit California plans to do a major marketing campaign about the healthcare reform and what is available for our residents, but the Human Services Agency, the health system, and our community partners are also committed to getting the word out that enrollment will begin in October, and that we have many products to offer and to assist them in connecting with, to receive their health insurance. A very big issue is how many people will actually enroll during the first open enrollment period. It's expected or predicted that approximately fifty percent of the eligibles will enroll for us. That would mean about twenty-four thousand residents would enter into a, a health insurance program. It's also predicted that in subsequent years, enrollment may go as high as seventy-five percent of those who are eligible. Certainly, the variable, variables that will either assist or harm this enrollment rate will be how easy it is to enroll in the insurance programs, the accessibility of providers who can actually provide health insurance, health coverage, and also always customer service will make a, a real big impact on, on how the take-up rate actually occurs for these programs. And so affordability is a, a big question. What might the monthly premium be for the products that are being offered? From this slide, you can see that for a forty-year-old San Mateo County resident who is at one hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty rate, which is about seventeen thousand dollars a year, they have options from a low premium of five dollars a month through the Chinese Community Health Plan, HMO. If they wanted to enroll in Kaiser, it would go up to fifty-seven dollars a month. A Blue Shield PPO policy might be in the sixty-six dollar range. Consumers will have choice and options to consider, and will make decisions based on their individual family circumstances. Our goal is to make enrollment easy and accessible, different from traditional Medi-Cal programs where residents must provide multiple forms of verification. Under healthcare reform, the process actually allows us to determine eligibility and actually aid individuals in the same day. We are able to do that because we, we will have access to data systems that will link with our data systems to provide real-time verification, and will no longer need to do the, the back and forth of sending forms out and receiving forms back, and forms being lost in the mail or not being received, which would often will cause a delay in getting someone enrolled. We look forward to a simplified process. We look forward to simplified eligibility rules, and we believe that all of those things will assist us as we move forward in implementing healthcare reform. The Human Services Agency is working hard to prepare for October's open enrollment. We're redesigning our business processes in our workspaces. We're clearing out our backlogs and creating new accountability metrics. We've created a reporting structure with the Healthcare Reform Unit reporting directly to the Agency Director that strengthens our accountability, and we are busy identifying new metrics that we will use and be reporting out to not only this board, but to our public about how we're doing as we enroll individuals in health insurance. I'd now like to turn it over to Jean Fraser, who will talk about the health system.
Thank you, Bev. Let's move on. So the effect of the Affordable Care Act on the health system is perhaps a little less clear than it is on some of the other county agencies. Our expectation is that, that about a quarter of our uninsured residents will, in our local coverage program, which of course we call ACE, will move to Medi-Cal, and that will, of course, bring some revenue for care. But it is also important to understand that the medical center and our clinics are going to have to compete with private providers for Medi-Cal patients as we enter into this brave new world. It's also important to understand that the Affordable Care Act does not cover everyone. Our estimates are that there are approximately twenty-two thousand uninsured residents who we already serve, and of course, some number potentially outside of those who we serve now, who are ineligible for coverage. These include children who are enrolled in our local Healthy Kids Insurance, as well as about eighteen thousand adults who are enrolled in ACE. So in addition to those who are categorically ineligible, who are not covered by the Affordable Care Act, we know that some people are going to fall through the cracks. If you remember in Bev's presentation, whenever a new coverage program is brought up, and there are people around California and, and other parts of the United States that have brought up new coverage programs, I brought up Healthy Kids and Healthy San Francisco in San Francisco, you do not get everyone to enroll in the beginning. One, there's just a, an issue with managing to get the word out to everyone who might be eligible. Two, you need time to build up trust in the program. And three, typically, there's just not enough staff to do sufficient outreach and enrollment. So the expectation is that somewhere between twenty-five, fifty percent, but again, this is a guess, because nobody's done it on this scale before, will not enroll, especially in the first year. Coverit Californians own predictions, they have sort of a best, a medium, and a worst case. All of them have a fairly slow ramp up over the course of at least three years before you're likely to hit what will be kind of your maximum enrollment. In addition to the fact that there will be, it will take time to ramp up enrollment in these programs, it's also important to understand that there is, in fact, a categorical out from the individual mandate for low-income people for whom insurance costs more than eight percent of their income. And in particular, there's a real issue with children. Because of a, the way the Affordable Care Act was written, individuals who are offered insurance through their employers and have a family, they actually are not only exempted from the individual mandate, but their children and spouses cannot get the federal subsidies if the coverage that's offered just to the individual is less than eight percent. So I know this is kind of technical, but it's very important to understand that this is not going to be perfect out of the gate. And of course, the result is, the health system will be care, providing care to a lot of uninsured people for a number of years to come. This is a very important fact to understand, because right now, we are in, I'd like to call it a discussion. I'm not sure it's exactly a discussion, because that implies equal weight on each side, but the Brown Administration is right now attempting to take health realignment funds that the health system receives, and in fact, all counties receive, on the premise that magically everyone is going to be enrolled starting in year one. And I want to thank especially Supervisor Groom for leading the charge for our lobbying efforts in Sacramento. This has become a very hot issue, particularly because Governor Brown is not even agreeing to limit the take to our health realignment funds. We learned today, they are expecting to actually take county funds away from us. So there's a big fight going on in Sacramento right now. Part of the other thing that is going on is that all public hospitals in the United States agreed, as part of the way that the Affordable Care Act would be funded, to take fewer dollars through our disproportionate share hospital program from the federal government. So we are facing reductions in funding, both from the federal and the state government. So the net effect financially on the health system, frankly, is very unclear, but that doesn't mean we aren't working very hard to get ready for health reform. We want to get better, faster, and cheaper. We are trying to increase our capacity, both through efficiencies, and we very much appreciate all of your support for the South County Center, which will allow us to consolidate three clinics, find some efficiencies, and make space for two thousand more patients. You're well aware of our lean process improvement efforts to increase the quality and reduce the cost of our care. And of course, we will be very focused with our partner and lead in this effort, HSA, to convert as many patients as we possibly can to Medi-Cal. And now I'll turn it over to Donna Valencourt for the county perspective, county employer perspective.
Before, before, Jean, before you do that, Supervisor Tessier?
I just had a quick question. Maybe I just missed something. You mentioned that there's going to be twenty-two thousand that are ineligible for this. Can you explain, because it's eighteen thousand ACE and about four thousand children? If they're in the ACE, why would they not be able to?
They're undocumented.
Okay. Got it.
Good morning. So I'm going to talk just very quickly about our responsibilities as an employer under the Affordable Care Act. The good news is that we have, under our current plan design, many of the features that are required under the Affordable Care Act. Let's see. So we currently cover dependents up to age twenty-six. We have zero co-pays for preventative care. The Controller's Office provides on the W2s the information about the employer's cost of, of healthcare. We've reduced the FSA limit, and that there is no lifetime benefit limits. So these are already included in our current plans to employees. However, as of January first, we will need to provide coverage, all large employers, and large employers are defined as fifty employees or more, will be required to have coverage for all employees that work thirty hours or more. And in our case, we've looked at what that is. It's an additional hundred and twenty-one employees. Coverage must be affordable, and there's different ways of identifying that, but we're going to use the IRS Safe Harbor language, which means that the coverage cannot be more than nine point five percent of income. So as an example, our entry-level employees working thirty hours or more, that would mean that their share of cost could not be more than a hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. There are severe penalties for not offering affordable coverage, to the tune of eight hun, in our case, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month, because it's based on all of your employees, the cost per employee. There are also penalties for not, if the coverage is not affordable, which is about three, three thousand dollars per employee. So we definitely are making sure that we're going to meet the requirements. Every day, we seem to get changes. The regulations continue to be issued, as well as we find out clarification, so we're learning every day as we go along. But we're currently in negotiations, meeting with both AFSP and SEIU on coverage for our extra-help employees. Okay, and that chart just shows you the different responsibilities for both human services, health system, and HR under the ACA. Finally, we're going to learn much more as implementation begins. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Groom?
I, I just wanted to make a comment to go, carry on with Jean and the negotiations that are going on with the Governor's Administration right now on Medi-Cal. I was at the CSAP Conference last week, and I was very, very disappointed to hear both the Governor and the Director of Finance with what I consider to be a cavalier attitude about county's responsibility-- about county's responsibility for providing safety net services. The negotiations are not, are continuing, and we're hoping that our local representatives will be able to come through with some breakthrough. But in essence, the taking of the money from the county and then asking us to provide healthcare, which we want to do for everybody who lives here, the dollars and cents don't make, don't balance. And what the Governor told us is, we need to bite the bullet, we're all Californians here.
I will second that, he did, that's exactly true.
And the Director of Finance was, provided no additional help also. So, we, Jean and her team, and Connie and Mary, and our lobbyists in Sacramento are continuing to work on this, but this is really serious because if this doesn't get resolved, and even if it's June, and we don't get resolved, and it becomes October in open enrollment, we may not have a product, and we may not have the funding to deliver the healthcare that we're required to deliver. So, we really, this is very, much more serious today than it was six, seven months ago.
Supervisor Tessier.
First off, thank you, Carol, for doing that heavy lifting in Sacramento, and it just seems like every time we go to the Governor and the Director of Finance for whatever it is, you know, they have been very cavalier in not wanting to fund the necessary things that they really should. I guess one question I have on outreach, I mean, obviously outreach is going to be incredibly important, and I guess, do we have an actual plan, outreach plan in place for San Mateo County specific? I realize there's going to be some state outreach and all, but do we have a plan?
We do have a plan, we're actually going to be issuing an RFP, both the health system with the assistance of HSA. It's very important in any kind of a program like this to have people who are trusted by the people who are going to need to do the enrollment. One of the things that was in the slides but we didn't highlight is, one of the greatest challenges in this is that over 50 percent of the people who will be eligible for new coverage do not speak English as their first language. So, we are going to be working with community-based organizations, HSA will be doing outreach, and of course, the Health Coverage Unit in the health system will be doing outreach. That's all under the umbrella of Covered California, who has given grants. Planned Parenthood, I believe, is the only organization in San Mateo that got a grant specifically from Covered California. I'll just say, interestingly enough, a lot of the grants are directed towards agencies that appear to appeal to a younger audience, which frankly makes sense from Covered California's perspective, because they want healthy people to be enrolling to make sure the risk pool. But from those of us who are caring for the sick people, we may be needing to do the outreach to them.
Before you sit down, you talked about the, if somebody does not sign up by March, that they are not then eligible until January of 2015, and the only exception would be if there's a qualifying event. What happens if that person has a catastrophic illness? I assume that that ends up a county responsibility.
Correct.
Okay, and then you also said that 20 to 50 percent of eligible people probably will not enroll in the ACA. Are you only talking about the people who are eligible for Medi-Cal, or are you talking about the people for the whole gamut of people who are currently uninsured, may be able to, you know, either get subsidized or pay for health insurance on their own?
We actually, because in San Mateo, through the great work of the Health Coverage Unit in conjunction with HSA, we actually should have one of the highest rates of uninsured people converting to Medi-Cal because we've already enrolled so many of them in our ACE program, and we have them already targeted and literally ready to go, to turn over. It's about 70 percent of the people that are estimated to be eligible for Medi-Cal, we're literally ready to hand over the data and flip the switch. It's the ACA where we believe the enrollment will be much slower.
I see.
This has never happened in the United States. People will be uncertain about whether it is worth their while. I should point out, a big issue will of course be cost, and, where is it? These numbers, which one could argue are at some level very good, they're certainly much less than one would expect to pay if you were out on the private market, but this is the Silver Plan, and I believe that there's a $2,000 deductible.
Okay.
So, there are going to be significant barriers to enrollment.
One other thing is that at CSAC, the Director of Finance, and also the Governor, they maintained that, maybe not so much the Governor, he was pretty, his was not packed with the facts, but they indicate that they believe that, we thought, we thought here, that the federal government essentially compensates the state at 100 percent. They say no, it's 50 percent. Who's accurate?
Yeah. So, Bev referred to two different Medi-Cal programs, and I think that's really the way to think about it. There is the traditional Medi-Cal program, which is you're poor and you're something else, you're poor and you're disabled, you're poor and you're old, you're poor and you're a minor child with some deprivation. For anyone who qualifies for that program now or in the future, the current sharing arrangement of 50/50 remains. What the Governor is referring to is what's called the woodwork effect. It is the idea that when the country can say, hey, if you're low-income and a citizen of the United States, there's a program for you, that a whole bunch of people who are right now could sign up for Medi-Cal, that with this new message, they will actually sign up. So, these are people who are coming out of the woodwork. And so, those absolutely will still be shared 50/50. Anybody who qualifies just because they're poor, it's 100 percent paid for by the federal government. So, in our estimation, the Governor is using this relatively small woodwork effect, which frankly is the state's burden already, to justify a huge take of resources from the counties.
They definitely have extracted, trying to extract as much as they can from the counties. Supervisor Payne.
Just a follow-up question on the, you know, the predicted uptake. I'm glad you asked that clarifying question about, you know, Medi-Cal versus the subsidized coverage. So, Medi-Cal sounds like, you know, we're in a particularly strong position. Do we have an internal goal for the kind of uptake for the subsidized coverage, or is, you know, is that something we, you know, have a target on?
We do not, I will say, that is really controlled by Covered California. We did not, we applied for, did not receive a grant for outreach. These are people who, to a large extent, there's only a small number of people who currently are in the ACE program who will qualify, and our goal is of course, to convert 100 percent of them, but it's only about 3,000 people.
I see.
So, the vast majority of people who will qualify for Covered California are people who never touch our systems.
I see, okay. And do we have, it seems to me we must have a particular problem in our county, given that, you know, 400 percent of the federal poverty level is $46,000, and that, you know, we, that doesn't get you anywhere in San Mateo County. So, you know, people who make quite a bit more than that presume we don't have insurance today, and what becomes of them?
Generally, people who are uninsured tend to fall in the below 200 percent, the vast majority are below 200 percent. In high-cost counties such as San Mateo County, we do have people between 200 and 400 percent who are uninsured. Typically, people who are 400 percent or above get their insurance through an employer.
That's good news.
Typically.
Yeah.
There is of course, yeah, a question about what will employers do in the future, but that's typically how it works.
Okay. And just one other, one other question, are we able to take advantage of our Code for America talent on this undertaking? Or, I know they were focused on hunger, so I don't know if this is something they can work on too.
Through the chair, one of the tools that the Code fellows have developed will be a tool that can be used not only by our CBOs, by our other county departments, but can be used by our residents to actually click in what their need is and be given a whole list of options, alternatives, hours of operation, how far it is from where you are right now, what's the map to get there, what are the hours of coverage under the Affordable Care Act. We actually will have expanded hours, we'll be open from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And so, we're going to have that information that's available on an app that any resident will be able to access to know exactly where they can, they can go.
I just have one speaker on this, lo and behold, Martin Fox.
Thank you very much, President Horsley. Having spent more than 25 years in the financial services industry, I have an appreciation for the system's requirements, and I believe that, given the stewardship of the Human Services Agency in the past, that you should lend their full support to the Human Services Agency effort in bringing this about, with the understanding that the Mental Health Parity Act, which is the federal law, will not necessarily provide the kind of mental health treatment that people suffering from anosognosia, who don't believe they're sick, really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And thank you, Jean Frazier and Beverly Beasley Johnson for that report. Oh, Donna, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't see her, she was blocked by that stupid thing there, so. Next report, Measure A Report Backs.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Mr. President.
Good to hear from you this morning.
Good to be heard. And honorable members of the Board, at our Measure A Workshop in February, your Board requested the Peninsula Arts Council submit a formal request for Measure A funding to increase opportunities for residents to enjoy all forms of art in San Mateo County. They've submitted a formal proposal requesting 407,000 in Measure A funding over two years, and a total of 2,183,000 over 10 years. The funds will build the capacity of their organization to support and promote the arts in San Mateo County. The proposal specifically requests 185,000 in 2013-14 to rent space for their organization and hire a full-time executive director and administrative assistant, and thereafter, 222,000 is requested for ongoing staff support. With an official office and a paid staff, they propose that they can promote and professionalize the arts in San Mateo County by providing a paid cultural liaison to work with the County Arts Commission, work with the cities and other community organizations to develop a county-wide public art master plan, and apply for art grants on behalf of San Mateo County. Staff recommends not allocating ongoing Measure A funding to the Peninsula Arts Council for two reasons. First, many of the proposed activities are done in whole or part by the San Mateo County Arts Commission, and second, the request is essentially ongoing and continuous support for a specific nonprofit. While support of the arts is a worthy goal, we do not recommend using Measure A funds to build and support a nonprofit organization for 10 years that would duplicate some of the work currently being done by the County Arts Commission. That being said, there may be specific tasks that the Peninsula Arts Council could do to assist the commission, but it's recommended that the commission request proposals for those projects, and the Peninsula Arts Council would be welcome to bid on any of the commission contracts. And that's the staff recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Thank you.
Next one is all.
Can I, is that just a comment?
Oh, you can make a comment, certainly, sure.
You know, the issue of the arts in San Mateo County, I do think is one that's, you know, worthy of further study. In my two years on the Board, you know, I haven't, you know, seen a presentation from the Arts Commission, and I wonder if, you know, there's more we can do to enhance the arts. I don't have a specific proposal. You know, I can see a place for some Measure A funding to help the arts, although I agree with the staff recommendation on this particular proposal. So, perhaps, you know, at some juncture, we could reserve some time at a meeting to just talk about the arts in the county generally and, you know, see if there are some targeted places where we could help. For example, you know, perhaps, you know, like in the past, we've done some seeding of like the Parks Foundation to try to get them up and running. I don't, you know, maybe there's some one-time monies that potentially could go to the Arts Council, you know, if it was matched by their own fundraising, or, but I do think there's potentially more we can do, and, but again, I think that's worthy of a discussion on another day.
Supervisor Horsley?
Yeah.
I'd be happy, I'm the liaison to the Arts Commission, and Deputy Manager Jensen works with them very closely, as does one of my staff members. They receive some funding from the state of California and have turned that into a small grants program to help local artists. They have developed a strategic plan, which we don't think is, we think that the strategic plan probably needs some work and some revisions, mainly to lessen their goals, so that they can be successful in those goals. So, but we'd be happy to have, put that on the agenda.
Yeah, because another potential approach would be to provide some funding to the Arts Commission. Again.
Yes.
Because right now, as I understand it, the total budget is only like $60,000.
It's very small, plus augmented a little bit with state money through the art, through the State Arts Council.
So, I think that would be helpful.
I think Mr. Holland and Ms. Jensen and Ms. Tomlasoff in my office and I have been trying for the last year to really reconstruct the Arts Commission and make them, you know, give them more of a, more of a countywide purpose, and put together, as I said, a kind of a smaller strategic plan, so they can really be effective and successful.
Adrian.
No, I appreciate that, Carol, because I was going to say the same thing. It might be nice to get a presentation, so then we know sort of what they're doing and does it need any assistance, or, as you say, can we pare it down to be more, you know, plausible? So, thank you.
Good. I support your efforts, Supervisor Groom. So, the next one is the library capital needs.
Yes, Mr. President. At the Measure A Workshop, the Board expressed interest in supporting access to library services and improving library facilities. As our communities continue to evolve, and I think you've seen that in a number of our libraries, so do our libraries as special places for our citizens. In this proposal, East Palo, there are four libraries that you directed that toward, East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, Pacifica, and Half Moon Bay. East Palo Alto is part of the San Mateo County Library System and operates out of a county-owned facility on University Ave in East Palo Alto. The existing facility is heavily used and the space is in need of interior improvements, including updating service points, location and functionality of the service desk, improving the layout and shelving of the children's and family place, creating a teen spot, updating the furniture and space, and doing basic painting and re-carpeting. North Fair Oaks, the library service is, the unincorporated North Fair Oaks area is offered at the North Fair Oaks Library, again, in a county-owned facility located on Middlefield Road. The city of Redwood City manages the delivery of services on behalf of the county library system, which also provides 265,000 in annual operating support. The North Fair Oaks Community Center is adjacent and is also in need of some maintenance and upgrading, and it is operated by the Redwoods, by Redwood City and the maintenance done by the county. Demand for services and meeting space exceed the current capacity of both facilities. Redwood City, the county, and the San Mateo Library System need to jointly plan how they will meet current and future needs for the library and community needs in the area. The third one is Pacifica Library. The current two libraries in Pacifica are part of the San Mateo County Library System. The city of Pacifica, in partnership with the library system, friends of the Pacifica Library and the Pacifica Library Foundation have been exploring opportunities to construct a new library. To date, activities related to the construction of a new single library have included development of a library building program, conceptual design, and cost model plan for a future new library located at the city's Beach Boulevard Development Site. In 2012, the city council acceded- In 2012, the city council accepted the report and has directed city staff to identify the next steps, including development of a financing plan for the facility and potentially a bond measure in November 2014. And the fourth one, the Half Moon Bay Library is also part of the county library system and serves both residents of Half Moon Bay as well as the surrounding unincorporated coastside area for over 30 years. In 1999, and this has been a long challenge for this library, looking at funding, and I won't go through all of that, but in 1999, we agreed, looking at the county and the city and the library system, that in the event the city of Half Moon Bay decides to either replace or significantly remodel and expand the Half Moon Bay Library, the county agrees to contribute 50% of the costs associated with the replacement or the remodeling, recognizing that approximately 50% of the population served comes from the unincorporated areas. The city of Half Moon Bay, in doing polling, the library is regarded as the most valued community service. It's come up high year after year. City of Half Moon Bay and the library system are currently updating the library building program, conceptual design, and conceptual cost model for a future library. Although costs for the new library are not in place yet, it's projected an estimated $30 to $35 million. So this recommendation is that we set aside $2 million in Measure A funds, tentatively to be approved to support facility remodels or design and/or physical and operating planning for new library facilities in the four communities: Half Moon Bay, Pacifica, East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks. To gain access to these funds, a city or local library match of $1 for every $3 in Measure A funds would be required. Each community or local library could access up to $500,000 in Measure A funding, and that these funds must be committed to and with a specific project in the city or local match must be allocated by June 30, 2014.
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. I would actually like to add to this. Daly City, I was approached several months ago by the mayor of Daly City in that they are looking to remodel or upgrade the Ceremony Library, and what they're looking to do really is a feasibility study at this stage of the game to determine whether or not they need to remodel the library and/or at a cultural center or just see what the realities are of that. So I would like to include Daly City as part of the Measure A funding to be able to do the feasibility study, and I would have them submit, by the time this comes back to the board, more information on rough costs and, you know, sort of the scope of what they're looking to do. I realize they're outside of the JPA, but Daly City is the largest city in San Mateo County, and the Ceremony Library is really accommodates an awful lot of individuals and is always very crowded. So I would like to add Daly City into this mix. I don't know that I want to ask for more than the $2 million. It may be something, a much smaller figure from them to do that, but I would like to include it and then find out what that might look like by the time we get to the budget session.
Other comments? One thing I should make a comment on, it's actually one speaker on, the city of Pacifica may have some difficulty meeting the match, at least initially. And I'd like the CMO's office, and I talked to Peggy Jensen about this, and perhaps she could address this.
I can.
Oh, you can address this then, okay. That there might be some way, I mean, I like the idea of having a match. I don't have any disagreement with that. My concern is that, at least initially, the city, as we all know, has some grave difficulties, financial difficulties, and it's considering, for example, contracting the sheriff's office to reduce their cost of public safety. Be that as it may, they're also talking about this parcel tax to fund the library. So they desperately are interested and need this, but they may have some difficulty initially with the one-to-three match.
Yeah, I think there probably are a couple potential solutions to that. Certainly, we ought to sit down with Pacifica and talk about it, and I think that'd be the way to do it. The other is, if they really intend to go for a bond issue in November of 14, also, I'm sure at the board's discretion, we could extend the date to pull everything together in that case. So I would suggest, right now, we sit down and meet with them and see what the needs are. And, of course, the one-to-three was to get everybody to have some skin in the game.
Right, exactly. I understand that. There's one speaker, and it's Eric Rushein, who's a former Pacifica police officer, sergeant.
Thank you.
By the way, he drives me around in a parade, so.
Yes, I do. I'm honored to do so.
And I'm honored to be there.
I'm representing the Pacifica Library Foundation on whose board I sit. And first of all, I'd like to thank Don and all the supervisors for the support that you provide for libraries all through the county, not just Pacifica, and recognize Carol for all of her work on the JPA, and congratulate her on being elected vice chairman. You need another group to be in charge of. You don't have enough to do already. And also to thank the staff, Anne Marie De Spain. And we're very fortunate to have the level of support and commitment in this county for library services, and in Pacifica, we're particularly grateful. As the report said, we've been working for years to bring together all the different issues to get a library in Pacifica, and we're very excited that we are where we are, which is with the site, with the plan, and now just the funding. Of course, "just the funding" is a big few words. So we're very excited to participate in discussions and how the county can help us and how we can use Measure A funds. I do appreciate that. I would say that I have a little bit of heartburn over matching funds, because, to be honest, I don't see that that was a component in Measure A. I don't see that you've asked for matching funds in any of the other expenditures that you've made for Measure A, and I'm not sure that you're going to. So, and I don't think that was really the spirit of the law. And, Don, you and I know that a lot of conversation between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And I think the spirit of the law was to help the communities, and if we have to do matching funds, then in a way, we're paying twice. We voted for the measure, we're paying the tax, but we have to contribute beyond that. And I guess, for Mr. Holland, we have a lot of skin in the game. We have, I think sometimes, my whole body's in the game. So I would ask that you reconsider that. It's very difficult. When I'm not working to try and get the library built, I sit on the school board in Pacifica. I'm very familiar with the dilemma of trying to allocate resources for competing needs, and it's no small effort, and I appreciate the challenge to do it and how to do fair and how to do equal. Sometimes they're not exactly the same. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Eric. Carol?
I'll make a comment about that. I think that the way the library system is divided in San Mateo County in that we have a JPA with 11 libraries, and then the larger cities mostly have their own libraries. The funding formula is that the cities do the facilities and the county does the employees, and so we're already matching, in a way. And I think that, you know, for starters, I think we ought to stay with the matching system, simply because if we don't, I think it sets a great precedent, and I suspect we will have 20 libraries at our door asking for Measure A funds. And in year three or four, we may be able to accommodate extra money as we see how years one and two go. So I think we should try this for starters, see how it works. Obviously, if we get our, if libraries need additional help, we can certainly lay that plan out and talk about it. But I would recommend that we move this proposal forward to September, is how we're doing our work here.
Add Daly City into it?
I would add Daly City, yes, especially for the feasibility study.
Just a quick comment. You know, during the whole Measure A debate and discussions after and with all the dollars coming through, one of the things we did talk about consistently was leveraging our dollars. So to me, I agree with Carol. I would leave it now, and if there's special circumstance, I think meeting with Pacifica and any others that have some hardships, I think we deal with it that way. I think if we open this up, you know, this is libraries, next thing, cities are going to want us to build their wastewater treatment plants, and, you know, that's not our role, really, to build all these facilities in every single city. But I do know that there are some hardships in different cities. A lot of us come from cities that are not incredibly wealthy. And so I think if we can deal with it on a broader scale, as we are trying to, and then look at some special circumstance, I think that's probably a better way to address that, so that we don't start getting into, as you say, everybody's going to want to come to the door, because once you start building for one city, you're going to have to build for all the cities. So I do think this is a reasonable accommodation, and hope that we can just deal with it on that basis.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Holland? In the write-up for North Fair Oaks, it talks about, in the beginning, it talks about the library, and then later on in the report on page three, it talks about, starts talking about the community center and the needs there. And I'd just like a little clarification, if you could. Is the intent for the library, or is the intent for library and community center?
The need, if looking at both facilities, is probably one better designed facility.
Okay, thank you.
You know, just make one quick comment. Peggy, did you want to comment? For clarification.
If I may, through the chair, one, your question was, are we working on a library or a community center in North Fair Oaks? Anne Marie De Spain, our JPA library director, worked with the Redwood City Library Manager on this proposal. And what she proposed was the fact that our library, the library in North Fair Oaks, which is operated by Redwood City, needs some renovation. It actually needs to be bigger because it's very well-used. But what the folks in Redwood City came back with was a concept of looking at their entire community complex there, looking at the community center. So at this point, Redwood City is asking for a community center with a bigger library. We're saying what we'd like to do is sit down and meet with Redwood City, with the JPA and with the county, and figure out, how should this planning money be used? Should we start planning for a new community center there? Should we use some of this money to do a renovation or some improvements on the interior of the library now? So it's essentially creating the opportunity to have that discussion.
Thank you. And Will, just to follow up, if I could. And will, at some point, the board have input onto that approach as suggested by the city librarian? Will that?
My understanding was that we would have ongoing conversations and would probably come back to your board with a discussion of how this money would specifically be used.
While you're there, you and I had some discussions about what we could conceivably do with the city of Pacifica. Could you talk a little bit about what we might engage their city council or city management on this project?
In Redwood City?
No, 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 I'm sorry. In Pacifica.
In Pacifica. Well, I think that what Dave said is we can meet with Pacifica. I think there are a variety of options for us to look at in terms of that match. There's a question of timing, depending upon when their bond, when their tax measure goes through. So if we extended the time for the match from the end of June till, say, December of 2014, that might address the issue. There's also the opportunity to possibly look at maybe some loans, either through the county or through the JPA, so the share could be paid back. So they could move forward with their planning, but know that they had a long-term commitment to provide their share to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the real idea with the money is to get the planning off the shelf and get the projects moving.
Right, okay. Just one other comment, you know, one of the reasons that we talked about this for the city of Pacifica is we thought this would be a great incentive for the taxpayers to actually join in and support this building of a library. I think it's really needed by the community, and I think this measure, I hope, would be hopeful or helpful, that is, in passing a parcel measure. So with that, I guess we just, we just approve this for moving on to the, moves forward to September.
Moves forward to September.
Do we have to take a vote on that, or is this?
No.
No, okay. Thank you very much. So it goes on to item number eight, the county manager's report number five, and accepting the report on the analysis of fiscal year 2013-14 May revision.
Yes, and I think as discussions, as Gene Fraser got up and others, change is the daily word, especially on the budget. Before you, you have a detailed analysis of the governor's May revision. And as our county manager had detailed previously in his overview of the governor's May revision, it contains two proposals that would jeopardize county programs and services. The first is the administration's proposal to sweep county funds to pay for the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. The governor strongly believes that counties will realize savings, end quote, when the federal government begins to pay 100% of the cost of the Affordable Care Act implementation starting in January 2014. Thus, the May revision redirects billions of dollars in 1991 realignment dollars, $300 million in 2013-14, $900 million in 2014-15, and $1.3 billion in 2015-16, currently used by counties to pay for indigent health care and public health functions to the state. Adding to this sweep, the administration also proposing to take $400 million in 1991 realignment funds used to pay for mental health and substance use disorder services to provide the state match when federal money starts to decline in 2017. For San Mateo County, the sweep of these funds would translate into a loss of $32 million in three years. And I think you know, a cut of this magnitude would undoubtedly require painful cuts to programs and services at a time when the counties are being asked to provide more. Negotiations between the counties, led by CSAC, health and mental health advocates in the administration are ongoing, with all of the parties trying to reach compromise before June 15. And as Gene mentioned, acknowledged earlier, Supervisor Groom, who serves as county's representative on the CSAC Board of Directors, has authored an op-ed opposing the sweep of the county health care funds and has been involved with others in a statewide effort to raise concerns around the potential fund shift. And the second issue of great concern to the counties is a series that would have a negative impact, a series of actions that would have a negative impact on the county's excess ERAF funding. And these include, and primarily include, the local control funding formula, which would change the way K-12 public education is funded and will result in lower excess ERAF revenues for the county. Legislature's still debating the elements of the local control funding formula, so we can't really adequately quantify the potential losses at this time. However, the county manager has estimated upwards of $30 million, which is really just a ballpark between the 20 to 40 million numbers being bounced around right now. Redevelopment, the passage of AB 1484, the redevelopment dissolution or cleanup bill, added language that prohibits our county, as well as the counties of Marin and Napa, to lose a portion of property tax that should otherwise be returned to us. Controller's office estimated this loss of this excess ERAF to be around $540,000 countywide. County Office of Education ERAF funds shifted to trial courts. The May revision also included a proposal to make permanent a one-year shift of excess property tax collected by the county's Office of Education to fund state court costs. This shift is important to us here in the county because it would increase our financial obligation to fund special education services from excess ERAF. Estimated loss is about $6 million. It's important, you know, I'll just say, it's important to note that all of these figures are estimates at this time because the debates are ongoing. And I know Connie did a lot of good work putting this together, and I know that shift at- did a lot of good work putting this together, and I know that shifted from last Friday to this Tuesday, three or four times, and that's ongoing. Finally, the May revision estimated a lower level of revenues for 2011 realignment growth fund, forty-five million versus seventy-seven million. While actual state sales tax revenues will not be known until later in the year, it's expected counties will receive lower growth fund amounts than originally planned. And I'll just reiterate that, right now, you know, the best we can do is keep an eye on it, and we're going to continue to advocate for the impacts that will occur as a result of, especially, the local control funding formula in excess ERAF. Any questions? Because if they're real deep, I'm going to have Connie get up and answer them.
Comments or questions?
We'll continue to keep you updated as it goes along.
Thank you for the gloom and doom news. Thanks.
Just one comment. I guess hopefully, we'll have, you know, more clarity by the time we adopt our budget. I mean, with the Democratic government, Democratic's legislature, one assumes they'll get their budget done in time, but, boy, this really, you know, affects our, affects our planning tremendously, and who knows what these numbers are, you know? Yep.
Yeah, and on top of that, I think the federal program hasn't helped either.
No.
No. Okay, board reports. Supervisor Slocum, do you have a report?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. As you know, on Saturday, June 1st, we had our North Fair Oaks be seen, keep it, be seen, keeping it clean event, and I'm really proud to say that there were around two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five people that came out to do that. It was really gratifying to see whole families there with small kids, helping to do the cleanup. We had some eight organizations that volunteered to send people to help, would mention, the Sheriff's Activity League actually sent sixty people to the cleanup. St. Anthony's, the North Fair Oaks Youth Initiative, the Redwood City Community Schools, Boys and Girls Clubs, Caron, and the North Fair Oaks Community Council, as well as Community Covenant Church up on Jefferson, and members of the, of other smaller organizations actually came to volunteer. Had a number of sponsors, there were nine sponsors. I'd give a big shout-out to Lillian Clark and Joe Mariani of the county, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And after it was all over, and we'd collected the trash, and redone the garden, and fixed the sprinklers at the Fair Oaks School, we went back to the community center and had a lunch. There were, it seemed like there were more people there for lunch than were actually doing the cleanup, and we had.
If you called me, I would have been there too.
One of the local restaurants had donated two hundred burritos, and we were getting low, so we ran over to Costco and bought twelve more pizzas, and that went, and we had, we also had Vietnamese food, which was Vietnamese food, pizza, and Mexican food. It was kind of an odd combination, but it was really a worthwhile event, gratifying. The North Fair Oaks Council deserves the credit for helping to put that on, and I just mentioned Irving Torres in my office, who actually went door-to-door in North Fair Oaks, trying to get people involved, and as I said, there were some two hundred and twenty-five people that came, so it was a big change from last year, when there were about forty people that came. So congratulations to everybody that helped make that successful. It was quite an event.
Congratulations to your office.
Thank you. Great.
Supervisor Tessier?
I have, sorry, I have two things. This Saturday, June 8th, will be our ninth annual disaster preparedness day at the Event Center, and for those of you that come between ten and eleven, you'll get free admission and free parking, so we encourage families to join us and make sure they take note of how to be prepared in the event of a disaster here in our county, so we look forward to people attending on Saturday. I also have a very sad situation in Daly City. Many of you read about the horrific crash on Hillside Boulevard in Colma recently, and there were three fatalities of some very young people from Daly City. Ruben Abel Vasquez, who was twenty-two years old, Jonathan Jade Moutin, who was twenty-one years old, and Rosa Maria Falla, twenty-three, were all killed in that accident by a DUI driver who was obviously friends of these individuals, but unfortunately, a very sad situation took place, so I'd like to adjourn in their memory.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom?
A quick announcement, take a hike at Edgewood Park this Saturday, nine AM.
I'll be there.
Terrific.
And then come to the fair.
Then we're all, no, after, after take a hike, we're all going to the disaster day, because we will be a disaster.
Supervisor Pike?
Yes, just one, a comment about an interesting trip I took last week. I spent a half a day touring some of the South Bay salt marsh restoration projects. As I'm sure you know, under Senator Feinstein's leadership, a lot of salt ponds were acquired, but the process of restoring them is going to take many, many, many years, but it's really quite impressive to see the work that's happening. It was really quite fascinating also to learn that some of these salt restoration ponds have been around so long that, you know, they've created habitat for some very endangered species. So actually, the plan envisions, you know, some of these ponds remaining for that purpose. So it's a real balancing act between restoration and protection of species that have adapted to a man-made environment.
Interesting.
So it was very, very interesting, some good work, and again, part of the puzzle of sea level rise to provide some natural protections.
Thank you. Actually, as Supervisor Groom and I both attended the CSAC conference in Sacramento, and sat in on the health, ACA discussions with the governor's staff, and criminal justice realignment, that's much more complicated than most people think, and I'm real proud of what San Mateo County has done. We actually have, I think, are kind of a beacon for other counties of what our courts have done, as well as all of our other agencies, like the Sheriff's Department, Human Services, and Health Department. Then on Saturday, I went over to San Gregorio, it's one of the reasons my face was burned. I forgot to put sunscreen on my face. It was a, this was a ceremony, though, to dedicate a portion of Highway One for a state park ranger who was killed in 1975. I didn't specifically remember, I wasn't in the Sheriff's Department at the time, and I did not remember the specific event, but what had happened was that it was four young men in a Corvair decided, they were under the influence, obviously, they decided to make the vehicle go airborne, and they ran into and killed this park ranger. Unbeknownst to me at the time, she actually is a, was a peace officer. Park rangers are in fact, state park rangers are in fact, peace officers, so my office is going to work to get her on the San Mateo County Peace Officer Memorial and memorialize this. You know, we celebrate, or I guess, talk about this, I guess it's not really exactly a celebration, but it's a recognition and honoring all those peace officers who have died in the line of duty, and Patricia M. Scully is certainly one of those people undeserving of that honor and recognition on an annual basis. The other is sad to report that Don Hyman has passed away. He was born in 1930 to 2013, born in San Francisco, attended George Washington High School, his, he actually, his, he was predeceased by his wife Sheila Berlin Hyman, and he has a number of children and grandchildren in the area. Attended George Washington High School, graduated from UC Berkeley. He retired as a president of Reactor Experiments. It was a nuclear safety company, and he was active in civic affairs in Belmont. He was a planning commissioner, councilman, chairman of the fire commission, and mayor. And in San Mateo County, he was the president of the Service League, chair of the Criminal Justice Council, chair of the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission, and the grand jury, and he was also a director of the Peninsula Jewish Community Center and trustee of Peninsula Temple Beth L. I've known him for many years, he was one of the people who really founded some of the Hope Houses originally, so he was a great contributor to the criminal justice system. So with that, we are adjourned.